Hello, everyone. Welcome to the regular Flagstaff City Council meeting. Today is Tuesday, September fifteenth, two thousand and twenty. I'd like to go ahead and call this meeting to order and provide notice that the Flagstaff City Council has the ability to recess into executive session for legal advice, should we so choose to do so. With that, can we have roll call?
Mayor Evans.
Present.
Vice Mayor Shimonie.
Present.
Councilmember Aslan. Councilmember McCarthy.
Present.
Councilmember Odegaard.
Present.
Councilmember Salas.
Present.
Councilmember Wieland.
Present.
I'm going to go back to Councilmember Aslan.
I'm present, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, Mr. Odegaard, can you please do the pledge?
Yes, Mayor. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Ms. Salas, can you please read our mission statement?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The mission of the city Flagstaff is to protect and enhance the quality of life for all.
Thank you. So at this particular time, council, audience, residents, I would like to have a stop for a moment and acknowledge the loss of one of our officers here in town, Jarrett Schugart. And I'd like to have a moment of silence. We're going to move forward with item number four, which is public participation. But first and foremost, I'm going to recognize for public participation Chief Musselman.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Thank you, and thank you for the opportunity to tell you a little about Officer Jarrett Schugart. Officer Jarrett Schugart served our community through the Flagstaff Police Department since October of two thousand and fourteen. He was a local graduate of Flagstaff High School. Jarrett served as a field training officer and in two thousand and seventeen was selected by his peers as the Elks Club Officer of the Year. He has previously served on the detail, providing security for our city council meetings, and was loved by most of those he worked with. Jarrett was often described as being funny, but in a very kind, non-assuming way. He was a dependable coworker and seemed to bring out the best in others. Our deepest condolences go out to his family and his friends and his coworkers. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Officer. I mean, thank you, Chief Musselman. With that, I would like to say that anyone who may be experiencing or contemplating suicide may contact the Behavioral Health Crisis Hotline at one eight seven 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 five six four zero nine zero. Again, their number is one eight seven 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 five six four zero nine zero. Or you can also contact We Care Northern Arizona. Their number is one eight hundred two seven three eight two five two. Again, that is We Care Northern Arizona, and their number is one eight hundred two seven three eight two five two. With that, do we have any other items for public participation, City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, thank you. We have Sarah Dar, who would like to be offering a public comment.
Thank you.
Ms. Dar.
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. And before you this afternoon, as the Housing Director, this is Sarah Dar, and I am coming to share some good news with you on two different fronts. The first item I'd like to share with you is that we have finally successfully launched a Foster Youth to Independence voucher program, commonly referred to as FYI vouchers. HUD had some funds that were not being utilized in a timely manner in a different program, and they shifted them over to be able to issue vouchers that target youth between the ages of eighteen and twenty-four, who have or will be exiting the foster care system and are either homeless or at risk of homelessness. And rather than being issued an allotment of vouchers to fill, which is the common method and the one you're most familiar with, such as Sectionator VASH, the vouchers are only funded on an as-needed basis and only until the funding authority through the federal government is exhausted. If qualified, youth will pay thirty percent of their adjusted income for rent and utilities to a private landlord, similar to the other voucher programs you're familiar with, and the Flagstaff Housing Authority will pass the HUD funds through to the landlord to pay the remainder of the rent. This is a partnership with the Arizona Department of Children's Safety, as they will certify the youth as a foster youth who meets the HUD definition, and they will provide life skill services to the youth throughout their rental time. Housing Authority staff will determine the eligibility of the voucher to the voucher once we receive the recommendation, and also provide ongoing management of the voucher, as well as certain limited services related to obtaining and maintaining a private market rental. This is very similar to the VASH program, where we partner with the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs to serve homeless veterans. This is a small population in our community. We anticipate less than ten being served in the first twelve to eighteen months. However, this is a critical population that often fall through the cracks as they age out of foster care, or who become homeless after aging out of foster care and need some help to get back on their feet. One more item to share with you, I know I only have one minute, so we'll make it quick. I got an email this morning with a subject line that said, "HUD awards nearly two billion in CARES Act relief funding focusing on communities with higher risk of eviction." I thought, that's interesting. It's a general press release. I wonder where the money went. So I clicked on it, and I clicked on another link in it to see where the money went, and it turns out that some of the money is coming to us. About seven hundred and sixty-six thousand dollars in CDBG CARES Money Number Three will come to our community. We know nothing more about this money, but I wanted you to know, since the press release is out there, that we are aware, we are paying attention to it, and have already scheduled an appointment with our San Francisco representative in order to get additional details. It's the federal government, and the federal government moves slowly. And with that, I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you. Not seeing any more public participation. I will go ahead and move down our agenda. We're going to go to item number five. Item number five is liquor license public hearing. It looks today that we have a total of one, two, three, four different liquor licenses to look at. I'm going to open the public hearing for all of them at this time. Staff.
Good afternoon, Council Mayor. First, thank you for that moment of silence for Officer Schugart. My name is Ryan Turley with the Flagstaff Police Department, and I'm here to answer any questions you may have with the liquor license applications in front of you, and I believe the applicants are online as well.
Counsel? Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I had two questions. The first question is concerning the applicant, which is Agenda Item Line C for Collins Irish Pub. It talked about this license would be covering concerning food, and I thought Collins already served food, so I'm a little confused why the ask with this, and so if someone can explain that to me, that'd be great. And then the second question was concerning the Agenda Item, oh, Item B, which is the Flagstaff Liquor. And the ask is concerning, I guess, sampling privileges? And so I was wondering if someone could explain that to me, what that means exactly? And those were my only two asks, so thank you.
Can we have the applicant from, let's say, Collins go first, followed by the applicant with the sampling, which would be Flagstaff Liquor?
Good afternoon. My name is Jeffrey Miller. I'm with Collins Irish Pub. I'm the statutory agent for the application and for the location. The location has previously been operating with a Series Six license, and yes, they have been and will continue to do food, and they have historically done more than forty percent of revenue from the sale of food, which qualifies them for a Series Twelve. With the COVID and the confusion with all of it, locations with Series Sixes and Sevens have been targeted and closed down by the state, and the only locations that were allowed to be open, even though the Sixes and Sevens were doing food, our client at Collins had a Series Six, so he was closed during part of that time. With the Series Twelve, if there's a big increase, we can still maintain and focus on serving food for our clients and for the community if they choose to restrict the Sixes and Sevens again. And the plan is to continue doing well over forty percent and possibly sell the Series Six, as we now plan on continually doing more than forty percent gross sales from food, i.e. qualifying for the Series Twelve. I hope that answers your question. Thank you, Mayor and council, and I'm very sorry for your loss to the police department as being a twenty-plus-year police officer. That does bring pain to all of us in the community.
And that does answer my question, so thank you.
Can the applicant who is with Flagstaff Liquor please answer the question?
Good afternoon. My name is Trevor Phillips. I'm the representative from Flagstaff Liquor. So the question was in response to the sampling for the liquor store license?
Mr. Odegaard? Can you restate your question?
Yes, yes, that was concerning sampling. I thought it was a little unusual of an ask, and so I wanted that to be explained to me of how that works with the sampling. And are there other businesses doing such a service?
Yeah, it's actually quite common with liquor stores throughout the state. My store in Esther, Total Ryan, and a lot of the bigger stores offer sampling within the store of new products, featured products, like this month is Bourbon Heritage Month, so they'll offer tasting for their customers to try something new before they buy it, where you're limited to one ounce of hard liquor, and I believe three ounces of beer per customer per day. So it's very little amounts, but it allows us to showcase new and unique products.
And so I assume because of the ask, you have to have a license for that offer to your customer?
Yes, we do. It's a requirement of the State Board.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Ms. Wieland?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, as I was reviewing all of these licenses, I was taken back, the first one, Five A, being the ninety-first active Series Twelve. How much is enough? That's my question. How much is enough? And then moving on to Flagstaff Liquor, and Trevor, I appreciate you being here, but, you know, and I read your statement that you wouldn't be selling forties. You know, I'm not sure that's the reason to grant this liquor license. I'm concerned that your location on Route Sixty-Six is a prime location for people who are walking by, and that they could walk right in that front door and get your shot of bourbon. And I'm sure that if you're... Are you saying you won't serve forties?
Yeah, our business model that I currently operate the store, we don't sell forty-ounces, and we don't cater towards the malt liquor crowd. And malt liquor can be confused with anything from seltzers nowadays to high-heavy alcohol beers, which I'm sure you're referring to the appeal to a certain demographic of people. And I assure you, my liquor store is not like any that are operating in Flagstaff. We operate a very high-end.
I don't think you can pick your clients and not. If someone comes to your door, they get to participate if they so choose to, correct?
Oh, you can definitely pick your clients by your mix of products. I mean, people go and shop in Nordstroms and places like that. Those don't attract every customer out there. So based upon what we do, we offer a very high-end selection of products, and we've chosen not to sell the product mix of malt liquor forties and then tall cans of lower quality products.
And do you sell those little mini bottles of alcohol, whiskey?
We do.
So I'm just expressing some concerns here. You have had this liquor license without this sampling piece on it for how long?
For about three years now.
Okay. And you're happy with your business that you've done?
We haven't been allowed to open yet. We are still waiting on the final permit from the city of Flagstaff for building.
But yet you just said you were in business for three years.
I said I've had the license for three years. My corporate Prescott, I've operated for thirteen years, but in Flagstaff, we have yet to actually operate yet.
And is your Prescott store a sampling store?
It is. And by many people's accounts of it, it's probably one of the nicest liquor stores in the state of Arizona.
Well, Trevor, I certainly appreciate you being willing to stand up and talk to us about this, so thank you very much.
Anytime.
My own, my other concern is, of course, with Five C, and again, it was listed as ninety-two. We have active licensed Series Twelve, and I've noticed that on all of the applications, there's a statement about COVID and how we're going to keep individuals safe. But quite frankly, I've gotten more emails over the concern about how the applicant of Five C has not done that with his clientele. So is anyone here to speak to Five C?
Yeah, we do have the license. What is it, Mr. Craig Miller? Mr. Jeffrey Craig Miller? Mr. Miller, are you still on the line?
I am still on the line, yes.
So, Mr. Miller, I understand that legally, the idea of serving food and alcohol is all well and good in that, but along with that comes a great responsibility of keeping not only the patrons safe, but the community in which the bar functions. And I have, I have deep concerns when we read about the police report in the past. It's about underage serving. We've had already this year complaints of people being out, lines being outside the door, no face coverings. I just, I have concerns in moving this, in recommending this forward. So that's all I have to say. Thank you, Mayor and council.
I'm going to go to our city attorney first, and then I'm going to go to Ms. Salas. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, and I appreciate Councilmember Wieland's statement there at the end, as far as moving this forward for recommendation or not. That really is what's happening here. I've heard some prior statements today during the conversation here about a reason to grant or deny this, these licenses that are being requested. Again, it's just a reminder of terminology that the matter before council is whether to forward the application to the state with a recommendation for approval or denial.
Ms. Salas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a question for Sergeant Turley and perhaps all three applicants. First, Sergeant Turley. In your memorandum on the application of Collins, it stated a history of violations from the applicant, and then also taking the mandatory liquor training. My question is, has the applicant, historically, so the last violations occurred in two thousand and sixteen, have the errors been rectified? And if so, it would have been helpful to have added that on to the report?
Yes, ma'am. It seems like any punitive measures have been satisfied, and we haven't had any violations since two thousand and sixteen, ma'am.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that clarification, Sergeant Turley, and thank you all for everything you do for our city and as the lead person, lead officer, conducting all the investigations for liquor license applications. My second question, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is it true that any restaurant or any bar or any liquor store serving or selling alcohol can refuse to serve a customer, especially when the customer appears to be underage or already intoxicated?
Yes, ma'am, they can.
Okay. Thank you, Sergeant Turley, and I will ask the same question to all three applicants. Have you ever, in your business, you know, existing or prior business, have you ever refused service to a customer who appears to be underage or appears to be already intoxicated?
Mayor and council, again, this is Jeff Miller with Collins Irish Pub. If you want me to answer for us at this point?
Yes, please.
Thank you. Not only do we and have we, but it's required by statute, the laws say you cannot allow an obviously intoxicated person into the establishment, and if somebody becomes obviously intoxicated, you have to cut them off, pull their, have them pay their tab, and then offer them a safe ride home, which is consistent with our policies and procedures manual and our training. Our company, Arizona Liquor Industry Consultants, who serves as the agent for the licenses for Collins Irish Pub, is an authorized and approved Title Four, which is basic and management liquor law classes, and we have instructors go to Collins and train their personnel how to comply with them, what the Arizona liquor laws are. And we work with Mr. Choi in setting the policies and procedures to ensure that they comply with that. And to address questions earlier about the lines gathering, yes, with limited occupancy inside, there are lines that will grow outside of each establishment, but we ensure that our occupancy is less than fifty percent. And then, you know, trying to corral people on a public sidewalk to keep them six feet apart, we try as best we can, but with the number of college students and people moving into Flagstaff and the people visiting on weekends, you know, thankfully, all the establishments work pretty well together, and we're supported by local police in controlling those crowds out on the public sidewalk. But to answer, yes, we do, yes, we have, and yes, we will continue to not allow, obviously, to enter, and if they become intoxicated, we'll offer them, try to get them into a cab or an Uber to get home and have them removed from the premises.
Well, thank you for that response, Mr. Miller, and, you know, please note that I have been a fan of Collins Fish Fry Fridays on the menu. But can I hear from the other applicants with respect to what have, what is their practice in terms of serving or refusing service?
Again, this is Jeff Miller, because we also work with the mayor, with Mr. Fields and their business. Same thing, we do their training and work with them on their compliance and policies and procedures. They've experienced operators operating multiple locations in the Flagstaff area. Compliance with Title Four liquor laws is of utmost importance to us, and they will also instill in their employees and their policies to not allow, obviously intoxicated to enter or remain on the licensed premises, and we have designated driver programs and safe ride programs.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. How about the other applicant?
I'm not sure if there's a way, our order. This is Shawn Downing with Yucca North.
Can you go ahead and go, please?
Okay, yes. So essentially, it sounds like Mr. Miller pretty much has the gist of what all established bars do. We did, we follow very much the same procedures, liquor training. We do have an establishment down in Tempe that's right next to a college, so, you know, we're very diverse in finding fake IDs. Essentially, we take an approach of safety. So we want our staff to be safe and then translate that to the guests being safe. So whatever steps we need to take to assure that everybody has a good experience and a safe time, but we do go through the proper trainings above and beyond what the state requires.
Thank you for your response. I do appreciate the fact that you are transforming the former green room. And lastly, I have a note to staff, just for, I think for the executive summary on the staff report on Collins, there's some, just for records purposes. Let's see, is it Five C? Yeah, so the third, on the executive summary, third and second to the last lines, it showed Flagstaff Station as a business. So it may have been referred to previous application, applicant. So if that could be changed to Collins Irish Pub in the minute entry. I have no further questions, Madam Mayor, and I'm ready to make a motion after the questions from our colleagues.
Okay, thank you, because I do believe that there's several other people who have comments. I'm going to go to Mr. Aslan. I believe that our city clerk can answer your question.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and hello, everyone. I started out with one question about sampling, but I do have a couple questions, if I may. I'll take them in order, if that's okay. And this might be for Sergeant Turley, or it sounds like the, our city clerk might have a read on this. I'm curious, it was mentioned that sampling permits are actually pretty common in Flagstaff, and I know that I've gone into grocery stores before, like Safeway or Fries, and seen us sampling areas set up, and found that surprising before, but, you know, I'm just wondering how, how many of these permits are in the Flagstaff area? And also, when, you know, when a sampling happens at like a grocery store, is it the grocery store that's permitted to do sampling, or is that like a traveling specific? Is that like some sort of subset of a, of a permit of someone who travels from location to location?
Hello, Mayor and council. This is Stacy Fobauer.
Hello, Mayor and Council. This is Stacy Fober, the deputy city clerk. We currently have three beer and wine stores with sampling privileges and nine liquor stores with sampling privileges. The sampling privilege license is an additional license for a beer and wine store license or liquor store license. It's an add on. So the grocery store or the liquor store is responsible for holding their own license and adding the sampling license.
Okay, thank you. And Sergeant Turley, I don't know if you have anything to add to that that's that's relevant to what's before us. If so, cut me off and and take your stab at it. But another question, go ahead.
Oh, sorry, sir. Ms. Fober did amazing on that. Just to answer the one question that it's not traveling sales.
It's the store itself, the grocery store.
Yes, sir, it is.
And then, you know, I just wanted to bring something up. Councilmember Whelan asked a question. I I'm I'm not entirely sure if it was a rhetorical question or not. But she asked, how much is enough? And I, you know, I'm interested in exploring that, but before I do, I'm wondering if that's an even relevant thing for us to be discussing at all. Maybe the the city attorney can weigh in on this. I'm not sure. I'm not positive that the number of previous liquor licenses that have gone out in a community has any bearing whatsoever on our ability to find, to approve, or not move forward at approval for a new liquor license.
So Councilmember Aslan, Mayor and Council, I appreciate your question. This has actually come up before when it comes to saturation, if you will, of the number of licenses in a certain area. While it might be considered, when you make a recommendation for denial based on that, it's not always going to carry a lot of weight. I'm just going to say that.
Okay, well, you know, just to answer Councilmember Whelan's rhetorical question for my own part. I I'm not sure it's a relevant question. I kind of fall on the side of of the market taking care of that particular question with exceptions. And, you know, that can be tricky and very contextual. But in this case, for the the liquor store going up on 66 near Culvers. That doesn't really that. That argument or question doesn't really speak to me specifically in the context of of this particular application. And I'm ready to second Regina's motion probably once this conversation wraps up. And I'll take the rest of the commentary that anyone has from the sidelines. Thank you.
Thanks. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. My my comments and questions are for Mr. Miller. Mr. Miller, can you can you tell me, is is the mayor still closed?
No.
No, it's not.
I saw people outside the mayor yesterday or the night before, so I think the mayor is open.
Because I know that the I know that they closed the mayor for a while because of COVID and and the lack of ability to control the environment. Is that correct, Mr. Miller?
The mayor has opened up now. I think just two nights ago, it finally opened up. It was closed during time to, you know, obtain liquor licenses. Obviously, it moved from one location down there. We had to, in the new building where it went into, did a lot of structural improvements and, you know, update the building and and bring it up to the current owner's standards for such a building. But yes, they are now open.
I guess my concerns to Mr. Miller are just both with Collins and the mayor and and how the leadership or the management has handled both operations during COVID has been very concerning and, in my opinion, very inappropriate. And in putting public health at risk for the entire community. And I and I don't mean to say that those two operations alone are to blame or are at fault. But they do play a big role in all this, being more of a younger scene. And and I'm I'm struggling with this license. And I know that we, as a council body, only have the ability to recommend and the state really has the oversight. But I just ask you as a member and a citizen of a community to take responsibility into your own hands to the best of your ability to help mitigate the 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 spread of the virus in our community. You know, we're seeing numbers increase and specifically among student populations. And I think the mayor and Collins both have a big crucial role in this. And, you know, although even if both operations did close, I believe students will find a way to to still do what they would like to do. But anyways, I'm not too sure what Lumberjacks is.
Yeah, I think that it's the lumberjack that's now the mayor are the lumberjack is the old location of the mayor.
Okay, those were my comments, Mayor. And and Mr. Miller, I just I just hope that you you see what I'm talking about with with a sense of, you know, urgency and and importance and and I hope that you agree with my concerns and 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 the community's concerns around these gathering spots for, you know, potential super spreader events any night of the week amongst our younger population. You know, I'm not so much concerned about what happens on campus, but really what happens off campus. So those are my comments, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I do have some some comments. So I'm going to start with five A, which is the mayor. I don't have any comments on that particular application. I'm going to go to five B and say that I think that the shooters, those are those little single shots, might end up ultimately being an issue. That's the only comment I have there. I'm going to skip five C. And I'm going to go to five D. And I'm going to tell Mr. Hung that I appreciate the fact that he's taking over the green room and I wish them success. Then I'm going to go back to item number five C. So I'm going to make my comments on five C, which is Collins. I think most of you guys know that I used to manage a bar. I managed a bar for six years. I was a DJ at a bar and that I love bars. But I'm going to just be kind of frank about this and I'm hoping that Mr. Miller will take these comments in the spirit that they're meant. So first and foremost, I think that series six, and that's a bar licenses, people who held series six were hit extremely hard when it came to COVID and COVID-19. I think the governor's inconsistency between series six licenses and series 12s created a lot of confusion and a lot of additional hardship. Series six could have technically been open acting as a liquor liquor store. Because that's they have the ability to do that under a six, but there was a lot of confusion. And so when I hear him saying that they might ultimately sell the six because they're getting a 12. That tells me that the bar owner has financial constraints. That would be the only reason you would be thinking about selling a series six license and replacing it with a restaurant license, in my opinion. And so I want to make sure that we acknowledge that. I then have to say that I feel that the leadership at Collins was extremely irresponsible when it came to man managing the crowds when it was when when COVID hit. We were receiving numerous calls, numerous emails about the lines at Collins, about no one wearing masks at Collins, about the inability to social distance at Collins, and it was very disappointing. It was a lot of attention had to be paid to that one bar. That is also the bar that we tend to get most of the comments on when it comes to Tequila Sunrise. And so I would just say that, while we understand that you can't control the lines and stuff outside the bar. I think to just say that's not our responsibility is is irresponsible. I also think that I want to make sure that we understand that the the comments or the response made to Ms. to Ms. Solis's remarks about how do you manage people who are underage or who are intoxicated? That's a standard bar answer. Most bar owners would tell you exactly that. But I do think it's about being more consistent. And additionally, I want to make sure that we understand that you can be under the age of 19 and be in a bar. Right? There's certain parameters around that, but you can be, I mean, under the age of 21 and physically be in a bar. So I just think that that's important. I see that Mr. Miller has his hand raised. Mr. Miller? Craig Miller?
Hello?
Yeah.
Oh, this is Kiwan Choi, Mayor, or.
Sorry.
If if I may speak a little bit, if you don't mind. When we, so yes, we I know you guys heard the complaints about right after we opened back up in two weeks. We were, but inside the restaurant, we followed the guidelines, everything else that we could possibly do. And we, but outside was so hard for us to control. And and it's our fault. We should have done a lot better. But we are closing at 10 o'clock every night, 11 o'clock on weekends. We took out the pool tables, no dancing. People cannot get a drink if they don't have a food. I mean, everything I do, we follow the law, CDC guidelines, Health Department rules. We work closely with the police department. And I've been doing this for 25 years, that same location. And I I truly believe that we work great with the police department and everybody else surrounding us. Same thing with city council. Whatever that we need to do, we do it. With this pandemic hit us so hard, you're right, Mayor. We I am selling my number six to cover some bills and try to get through the spring. I'm broke. We've been closed down often on since the last six months.
Yeah.
And and but when you go to my restaurant, everything we go buy are the books. We don't take any chances. That's the perception of out there saying that we we're we're risky and we're hurting other people. That's not what I do. I've been doing this a long time. I'm not. I don't need to make money off hurting people's business. That's not what I do. And I'm fortunate that my family's healthy, my employees are healthy. But I really cannot close down for a third time and fire all my employees again. Then then I'm probably going to sell the restaurant or close the door down. And I've been here for 25 years. And it is tough times. And it it is confusing for me and you guys why I'm getting number 12 because I'm I'm telling you, I'm broke.
Yeah.
So, I mean, would you rather have some random person going into the restaurant location and trying to do things? Or would you rather have me work with you guys, work with PD, follow the law? That's the person that I truly believe that you need. And and like I say, you've been knowing me for a long time, Mayor. I don't I don't cut corners. I don't. And that's not who I am. And I'm I'm very, very blessed to have a healthy family right now, healthy employees. And I don't know how I'm going to survive next six months. This pandemic ain't going away. And but I'm not going to take chances. I'm not going to. I'm not going to do anything that is going to hurt people. That's not what I do. I'm not in hurting people's business. And I want you guys to know that. And I know you're concerned. I have the same concern that you have. So I'm trying to learn and try to pivot and try to figure out what's the right for my family, my staff and people surround me. That's what I'm trying to do. And and I'm hoping that you guys know that. I'm hoping that I'm here to serve the community and serve my family and serve my employees. That's what I do. And but you know better than anybody. You got you totally. You got it. You knew that why I'm selling, trying to sell my liquor license because I'm going to be running out of loan. I mean, I already borrowed so much money last six months to keep it open. I cannot borrow any more money. So now I'm trying to liquidate everything I have. I lost Market Bar and Kitchen. I don't have it anymore. And I got one restaurant left and I got 30 employees. And I got my family to feed and tried to pay the bills and keep the doors open. But that doesn't mean that I'm going to be reckless. I'm not trying to be reckless. I'm going to be safe. I'm going to serve my community. And that's my that's my that's what I'm that's what I'm going to do. And I want you guys, you know, I'm hoping that you guys I could get a recommendation from you guys. And and give me an option to may possibly sell my liquor license so I could keep the doors open.
You know, I want to follow up one because I want to say first and foremost, it means a lot that you are on the line talking with us right now. And I want you to know that I appreciate the fact that you're on the line talking with us about your license. And like I said at the beginning, for somebody to say they're going to sell a series six license, that means there's a financial hardship. So I want to make sure that you understand that I know that you're having a financial hardship. I really appreciate the fact that you're talking about the changes that you've made, that you're talking about safety. And the fact that you've been here for 25 years and you're trying to hang on in the middle of a pandemic. And so you're trying to change your business model and you're like, look, I'm going to close at 10:00 and I'm going to make sure that I'm serving food. So I want you to know that I appreciate your explaining what's going on over at your business. And with that, I actually don't have a problem forwarding your license on. So thank you for getting on the line. I do. Yeah, thank you for that. I think it took a lot for you to get on the phone and let us know exactly what's going on with your business as a small business downtown. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
So someone I see that there is something from Mr. Aslan. Then we have something from the Vice Mayor and then I believe Ms. Solis has a motion. Mr. Aslan?
Yeah, thank you. And I realize that this is getting us a little bit further away from just making a specific recommendation for approval or not. But it is an opportunity for us to discuss what has definitely been an issue and something that I've personally seen when walking around downtown Flagstaff on a late evening, for example. I apologize. I don't have everyone's name up here, but the speaker who was just on the the owner of Collins. What was your name again? I'm I'm sorry, I don't.
Kiwan, Wan Wan Choi.
A Wan. Yeah, thank you. I I I have a picture of you in my head from previous encounters, but I just couldn't remember your name. You know, I what if you guys were able to just text people that a spot is opening up inside and they could come on in? And that would further encourage people not to be gathering the way they are right on the sidewalk there.
Well, if I if I may answer that question, we we have control. We have truly become a restaurant. So a lot of times that we stay open 10 o'clock on weekdays, 11 o'clock on weekends. And at right after we close, everybody's gone. They go somewhere that they could go party somewhere else stays open later. We have become a restaurant. I'm not doing Tequila Sunrise this year. I'm not. I'm not going to do a New Year's Eve party. I just want to keep my doors open. That's what I'm trying to do. So if they have experience with my bar, it's it's more of a I took out the pool tables. There's no pool tables. I took I took out all the games. All the games are shut off or covered. And and like I said, after restaurant is over, everybody just goes somewhere that they could go hang out later. Whatever the establishment stays open later past 10 o'clock or 11 o'clock. So really, that that issue that you're talking about is first two weeks right afterward, we have to open in March. And would you know a lot about the disease at the time? I knew I mean, we knew that you would be up. I mean, I just. I'm a lot. I'm a lot better off now.
I I was I was downtown last weekend and it was pretty crazy what I saw there on that corner by Collins. With people gathering on the sidewalk and and other people just passersby pedestrians trying to share the sidewalk also. There was no social distancing happening and there was there was there were crowds waiting to get into Collins.
And we we closed at 11 o'clock, so I don't know what time you were walking by there, but thing is.
7:00 PM.
Oh, 7:00 PM?
Yeah.
So there are probably families or out of towners are trying to probably come in and eat dinner. That's what they're probably trying to do. But we don't let them. We don't let people in because if our if our restaurant's capacity is full, do not let them in. And if you if you want me to have a personnel outside to like tell people to leave. We can, but I don't know.
That might encourage folks not to gather outside as they're waiting to get in. Like, would it be difficult or cost prohibitive for you to set up a way for your host or hostess to tell people we'll text you when you're when when you're next in line?
And and tell them to go where?
Walk around the block.
Yeah.
Disperse just a little bit. It's just it's just a thought. I'm not really trying to be.
Last weekend was also Labor Day weekend and and that was just just a just a busy weekend, I think. But but like I said, we only have 40, maybe 45% of occupancy right now. And a lot of people are hungry. They're trying to waiting outside to go in and we let them know that there's other restaurants are open. And it's just.
My question or addressing my the comment. Are there more things that you can do to make sure that people aren't gathering on the sidewalk outside your doors while they're waiting to get in?
I could I could definitely go out there and let them know that take a take a walk around the block and we'll shoot them a text. That's a great idea. We could definitely try that method.
And again, maybe that's not the the whole of the solution, but. And again, maybe that's not the, the whole of the solution, but I, I think something like that might alleviate the problem in people's perceptions a lot. And it's nice to hear that you're open to that idea.
Absolutely. I mean, if anything that it keeps my staff safe, customers safe, I'm always doing whatever I gotta do. And, uh, and like I said, I mean, now we gotta follow, it's approaching. I think that was a rare weekend that we're busy. I will truly believe that it's going to slow things down and, uh, but I would definitely, I would definitely try that. I would definitely explain to my managers and staff to get their phone numbers and just walk around the block and walk around the block and come back.
And again, I, I realize we're getting a little astray of the actual approval of the permit, but I appreciate you taking that into consideration. I'm done, Mayor.
Thank you.
Um, Vice Mayor.
One Choi, I wanted to, uh, thank you for your comments and being on this call and, and sharing your, your vulnerability and your story with us tonight. And I want you to also thank, also thank you for your willingness to work with Councilmember Aslan's comments. And I did, I guess, I just wanted to make a comment not only for the applicants on the line tonight, but for the community at large. You know, if you do have lines outside your, your doors, your establishment, whether you're a bar or a restaurant, signage and just better communication about social distancing and mask wearing would be appreciated. Just for the whole community's public health and safety. You know, one, you mentioned that you're not in the business of hurting people. But we, we gotta, we gotta be very, we gotta be vigilant right now more than ever. And I'm, I'm ready for us to move forward with this agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
So with that, is there any comments from the public that was not heard during this meeting? I'd like to go ahead and close the public hearing on all of these liquor licenses. Ms. Salas?
Uh, thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm making this motion really seriously and with complete trust on all the applicants, the mayor, Flagstaff Liquor, Collins Irish Pub and Ittery and Yucca North, that you will all do your best in complying with all CDC guidelines, health guidelines, as well as our, our, our local proclamations in keeping your employees and your customers safe. And with also the ultimate goal of helping your respective businesses pivot and rebound as we, as a community overcome this pandemic. And of course I want to make a plug that all of, all of the applicants can get your free masking badges from our visitor center and other, and other decals that requires to mask responsibly. So I move to, uh, forward all four liquor applications to the Arizona State Liquor License Department for approval.
Is there a second?
There is a second, Mayor. It's Councilmember Aslan.
This has been a motion made by Ms. Salas and a second by Ms. Raslin to forward all of these liquor licenses to the state with recommendations for approval. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you. Now down to item number six. Item number six is our consent agenda. We have two such items on our consent agenda. Is there a motion?
Mayor, this is Charlie. I still move.
Seconded to approve consent agenda.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Ms. Whelan to approve the consent agenda as written. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Alright.
I do have a comment, Mayor.
Hi.
Okay, hold on real quick, everybody. Ms. Salas?
Yes, just a quick comment and kudo to our grants team for, for securing all of these grants for firefighters. And, uh, sending, sending well wishes to our firefighters, uh, fighting the fires in California right now. Thank you.
Thank you. So all those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to item number seven. Item number seven is our routine items. The first one is item number seven A. This is a consideration approval of a contract. This is a Central Square software. Priatory, pri, that one word, purchase contract for continued service and maintenance for three year term with automatic one year renewals unless sooner terminated. Stats recommend actions that we approve this purchase agreement and authorize the city to execute all necessary documents. We might have to have a clerk help with that one. I do apologize.
Uh, Mayor, Council, this is CJ Perry, the IT Director. This was a, a contract that we brought to council several weeks ago. And there was some comments from Councilmember Whelan about the increase from the contract of a 5% increase each year. We were able to reduce that down to 3% and we tried to add a little bit more documentation into the, into the summary as to where we got some of those numbers from. So I'm here if there's any other questions regarding this contract.
Looks like Ms. Whelan has a question. Proprietary. Yeah, I knew I was going to get it. Ms. Whelan?
No, no question, just gratitude. Thank you for asking about the reduction. I know it's not a large amount, but every piece counts. So thank you CJ and your team.
Absolutely. And thank you, Councilmember Whelan.
Are there any other comments? Ms. Whelan, are you going to make a motion?
I would love to make a motion there. So I move to approve the purchase agreement with Superior on Central Square to renew and extend services and maintain and authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Is there a second?
This is Charlie, a second.
The motion made by Ms. Whelan, second by Mr. Odegaard. Any further comments? All those in favor?
Hi.
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 Any opposed? That motion does carry. Thank you. We're now down to seven B. Seven B is consideration approval of a contract with Lodging Rev, short-term rental software contracts to monitor and collect data relate to short-term rentals operating in Flagstaff. Stats recommend action is that we approve this contract. It's a two-year contract and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents. I believe we have a presentation by Mr. Fitchett.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Can you all hear me okay and see the slideshow?
Yes.
Awesome. Alright, well, good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. This is Jack Fitchett and I'm here today in my management analyst role. This afternoon I have a brief presentation for you regarding a contract with a, an entity known as Lodging Rev to acquire their short-term rental data collection and monitoring software. Uh, so before we jump into the contract, I just wanted to provide you with some brief history related to this. Um, so in 2016, as many of, as many of you know, the state legislature preempted municipalities from prohibiting STRs via Senate Bill 1350. But as a FYI, this topic has started to regain a lot of interest in the state's political arena. And there were several bills that were proposed last session that would have altered how municipality could approach enforcement related to this industry. None of those bills made it to the finish line this last session largely due because of the, the COVID resort, uh, recess. But I, it is expected that we will see similar bills coming forward during the 2021 session. So just wanted to make you aware of that. Um, and then in 2019, council had the desire to begin to collect data related to short-term rentals in our community. So after, after staff received that direction in 2019, we began to meet with several agencies that we believed could help us collect data and monitor STRs within our community. Uh, we found several potential agencies that could provide this information and help us with this task. And I was estimated back in October of 2019 that there were somewhere between 1,300 and 1,700 unique listings in the greater Flagstaff area. Um, as we were getting closer to bringing a contract forward to council, the COVID-19 situation occurred. So we went, we took this item back to you during a budget retreat in April of 2020 to reaffirm your desire to continue forward with this item. Uh, so a little bit about the selection process, as I mentioned, after we had reaffirmed council's desire to pursue this, we put together a cross-divisional team that consisted of members of the community development, economic vitality, legal and the city manager's office to help us determine who was going to provide this software and help us collect this information. Uh, we really settled on two of the major entities, one being Host Compliance and Lodging Rev. And this team attended various webinars from the two agencies to learn what software they offered, how was it going to affect our community and how it could help us. And through those discussions, this, uh, the city team ultimately decided to select Lodging Rev for a variety of different reasons that you see listed on this slide. One of them being that the software, just the overall platform, the accessibility and how we could customize it to fit our needs seemed to be a better fit for us. Um, Lodging Rev is a highly recommended partner. Um, they, they worked with Sedona on their short-term rental tracking back in 2019. And they actually had a cooperative agreement that we were working this contract off of with them. And lastly, the pricing, Lodging Rev's pricing was very similar to Host Compliance. However, you'll see here in a minute that they offered additional, additional modules um, in your, in their initial package or pricing that Host Compliance also offered, but it would have been at an additional cost. So we were really getting a better bang for our buck with Lodging Rev. Uh, as far as the actual contract, as mentioned, it is a two-year contract totaling just over $74,000. You can see the breakdown on this slide. And with that, uh, with that April 2020 budget retreat conversation, we did carry forward the initial $50,000 that was set aside last year to pursue this item. Uh, you'll notice that we still have about a $24,000 difference there, but we think with the uh, tracking software, gathering this data and then making sure that, uh, folks have the appropriate transaction privilege tax license, that we will make up that difference in funds and hopefully actually a little bit more. It's estimated that anywhere between 35% to 50% of short-term rentals in Arizona are actually not operating with the appropriate, appropriate licensing. And this software will help us make sure that we're collecting the revenue surrounding those, those properties. Uh, so what, so what are we getting with this contract? As mentioned previously, Lodging Rev has a variety of tools and modules that also help with monitoring and enforcement that came standard with our contract. Uh, for that, for that reason, this slide kind of illustrates how we plan to rule out the software and take advantage of all of these available modules. Uh, the first step will be again to identify those properties within Flagstaff that are listing, you know, whether it be their apartment, their home or room on a short-term rental site such as Airbnb, VRBO and track that data. And then you'll see some of the modules, uh, below that are categorized as phase two will assist us more with that code compliance aspect in the monitoring and enforcement of these properties. So for example, you'll see the emergency contact registration there. Uh, that's a, going to be a great tool to make sure that if there are issues with some of these properties that we are actually getting a hold of, either whoever's managing it or owning it. There's a 24/7 complaint hotline, which is great if a, potentially a neighbor has an issue for whatever reason that may be, whether that's traffic or parking or noise complaints, they can actually call this complaint hotline rather than call our police department or other emergency services. So hopefully it'll decrease the call volume for these related calls. Uh, this, I just wanted to show you a little, a little preview of what this software can offer. So this is a map of the greater Flagstaff area. You'll see that these dots represent an advertisement. Um, the red are Airbnb, the blue are VRBO, the orange are FlipKey and the white are Other, which could be Craigslist, Facebook or another, a, a number of other ways that folks tend to list these sites. So Lodging Rev was kind enough to provide us with some initial data that they captured for us. Uh, so I could present this to you this evening. As you can see here, it's, uh, it paints a pretty telling picture of how many of these short-term rentals are currently advertising within our community. Moving on to some additional data, you'll see that, uh, you know, with this software, we can also look at, look at the advertisement and tell, okay, how many rooms does this advertisement have? How long are they, um, how long are these rooms actually being filled? What's the property type? You'll see there, there's the breakdown of houses versus apartment and condo and room. And then Other, I just as an FYI to all, there could be a, a number of things related to tents, RVs, campers, anything that's outside of those three traditional ones that you see there. And then, uh, lastly, here's some initial data. Again, it's kind of breaking down those three major advertisement sites. So you have Airbnb, FlipKey, VRBO. And those are advertisements that have been listed across those, uh, those platforms over the last, over this past August and the first week of September. I just want to point out to council that total advertisements does not necessarily mean unique listings. So for example, a, a home could be listed on all three or potentially more sites multiple times. This is just capturing the total advertisements, but once we actually execute this contract, we'll be able to see if a unique property is listing across multiple of these sites. And then on the far right there, you can see in that first week of September, there were 27 new advertisements that popped up across these, uh, these listing sites and the average daily rate or that nightly stay is about just over $210 a night. So in summary, uh, if council chooses to approve this contract, we will begin data collection related to the short-term rentals operating within our community. Um, and then something for, on their horizon is staff will be bringing an ordinance to council here in several weeks. Uh, very clearly outlining the current STR rules, regulations and operating requirements that have been set by the state. Uh, the team that actually helped pick Lodging Rev to, uh, supply the software to us also helped draft this ordinance and that will be coming to council to you all shortly. And then lastly, once we have that initial data and the ordinance passed, uh, we can begin working on outreach and education to the current STR operators within our community. And so with that, I will open it up, uh, to, to council if you have any questions. Thank you.
Council, do you have any questions? Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Jack, and thank you everyone who has worked on this. And, and I've noticed that in our staff reports, um, you're actually saying where the money is coming from general fund and, and city manager. I appreciate that change. Uh, so thank you for that. Jack, just roundabout, I have that in three years, it'll probably cost us around $100,000 to run this contract, if not 120,000. But what we're looking at is about $600,000 in revenue. Is that correct?
Uh, thank, thank you, Councilmember Whelan. I'm actually going to toss that question to Mr. Tatter if he's online.
Okay. And, and Rick, if you're online, uh, would that revenue be slipped back into the general fund or does it go somewhere else?
So, uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, this is Rick Tatter, Management Services Director. Ms. Whelan, can you re-say that question? I didn't quite understand the, the math part of, of what you were presenting.
So here, here we go. Here we go, Rick, right? So from, um, the cost of the contracts, I kind of approximated that and it came to about 100 to 120,000 for three years of contract. And then I looked over at the transaction tax license fees of 127,256 and I added those up round about 600,000. So am I correct in assuming that for 120,000 outlay, we are getting back 600,000 in revenue?
So remind me where you're pulling the transaction privileged tax license number from. What was that number again?
That's on the bottom of the staff report.
Expanded. Expanded. Um, so, yeah, we've seen a, a substantial increase, uh, in these licensed revenues. Uh, part of it is because the state, um, basically clamped down and told the, the people who are renting out the homes through Airbnb and those types of agencies that they are required to have a business license and pay the sales tax. So we've seen this, uh, revenue increasing over the last couple of years. Uh, two thousand eighteen to two thousand nineteen was about eighty thousand. And a lot of that was due to, uh, short-term rentals gaining licenses and going forward. We do think that, that we are still missing some out there. And, you know, time will tell how many more we can get to, um, apply and get those licenses. Um, but right now, there's, there's been about an eighty thousand increase since two thousand eight per year, uh, for this, um, primarily short-term rentals. So I'm not sure if I, I got it to the math you wanted, but the theory is our revenues are increasing more than the contract.
Okay, that's, that's what I needed to know, but probably not to the extent that I'm saying that I've estimated. Is that correct?
We, we do feel that this contract is covered by a, a licensing of all the short-term rentals, definitely.
Okay, okay, so, so right now, we're, we're maybe breaking even, if not gaining a little bit more revenue, uh, looking forward to the more data we have, the easier to be able to track and perhaps we'll see gains from doing that. I just, I'm just trying to figure, is this service paying for itself or bringing something more to the community? Or is it something we should consider letting go? That's all.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it will bring more revenues into ourselves, uh, pretty much to cover, uh, the cost of the product as well as giving us additional functionality that, uh, we'll want to implement in the future with the same product. Um, and as far as the, the funds from this go back into the general fund, uh, to be allocated through the budget process.
And I would imagine the data that we will be receiving will be very important, uh, in our future in considering planning and zoning and considerations like that. Thank you, Rick.
City manager? Thank you, uh, city manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councilmember Whelan, thank you for the question. If I may, uh, add on to what Rick, uh, has stated, and, and I won't do so with exact numbers, but, um, just with some general statements. Uh, in a previous, uh, jurisdiction that I served, I worked with this company. Um, and we did so, uh, much like Flagstaff is doing now. We were on the front end of the STR discussion and very anxious to, uh, have good data to help, uh, the municipality know, uh, what was out there, uh, in terms of short-term rentals. Uh, and also to make sure that everybody was, uh, playing on a level playing field in terms of the collection of, uh, sales tax revenues, in the case of Flagstaff license revenues as well. Uh, and Jack touched on this, but there, there are so many facets of this that are important and, but, but we're talking about revenues now and, and I'll comment on that briefly. But I, I want to add that the inventory, the data and the ability to monitor is in and of itself a, a huge benefit here. Uh, we, we just need to know, uh, what's out there. And, uh, this is a big step, uh, toward that. Uh, but limiting the discussion just to revenues, um, in, in the jurisdiction that I made reference to, uh, we more than paid for the service. Uh, in fact, you, you know, it's not out of the realm of possibilities to think that the, uh, the percentage of short-term rentals that are licensed and operating and, and paying, uh, uh, their collected, uh, s- sales taxes compared to all the, uh, short-term rentals that are operating without a license and without paying the sales taxes, so sometimes could be in the area of fifty to sixty percent. Uh, so if you think that through, uh, we will recoup a lot of revenues, a lot of revenues, it'll be substantial that are now not being collected, even though as Rick noted, we have been trending upward in that as, it's more state, administration on, on this, on, on this industry has been happening. But, uh, in my past experience, uh, the, the service, and it's the exact same service we're talking about here, uh, more than paid for itself. And, and we were able to monitor and have good inventory and good data. And we were able to ensure that there, uh, is a level playing field between all the lodges and all the licensed STRs and those that are, uh, not, uh, licensed. And that's very important, of course, to the lodging community. Uh, just to make sure that there is equitable, uh, playing field out. Thank you.
Excellent, and I really appreciate you joining the conversation here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Counsel, is there any other questions? Can we get a motion? I'm looking for a motion.
This is Charlie. Mayor, oh, go ahead, Charlie.
I'll, I'll make the motion. I, I moved, uh, approve seven B.
Ms. Whelan, are you second?
Yes, thank you.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and second by Ms. Whelan to approve seven B as written. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to seven C. This is a consideration approval of a lease agreement. Approval of the lease with the United States General Services Administration, GSA, United States Geological Survey, USGS, campus build-to-suit. Staff's recommended actions that we approve this lease agreement. We authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, Members of the Council, David Peterson, Capital Improvements Project Manager. I have a brief presentation regarding the lease agreement with the Government Services Administration and the United States Geological Survey Campus Build-to-Suit Project. On this context map shows the USGS Flagstaff Science Campus located up on Switzer Mesa, just south of Buffalo Park. This larger scale map here shows the context of the campus here just to the west of Cedar Avenue off of Gemini Road, again, just south of Buffalo Park. I took the conceptual design that's been done to date and I overlaid it over that aerial on the previous slide to, to give a better conception of what is happening here as far as this project goes. This project is going to include the demolition of two existing buildings. So buildings three and four will be demolished as part of this, a part of this project. Whereas buildings two, seven and eight will be constructed new as part of this campus. So the new bill, new building will be a two-story, uh, office laboratory. And then the, the building eight will be the new warehouse, will true be a one-story. And then the, the campus will then consist of, uh, buildings five, six, seven and eight. Uh, I'm new to this project. I have, have preceded, preceded by a wonderful team here and I just wanted to give a, a wonderful thanks to Rick Tatter, to Stacy Breckler-Naggs, Bryce Dottie, Christine Cameron, her former, former real estate manager Charity Lee and Aaron Winchus, Winchusel and GSA. And with, with that, I'm going to pass the presentation on to Rick Tatter, who's going to talk a little bit more about the financial aspects of the project.
So for the USGS campus, um, this goes back to when the voters approved a ballot measure in two thousand four, Proposition one oh one, one oh one, which authorized the city to issue a sixty-two point, or sixty-one point two million dollars in debt and back it by lease payments or pledged revenues, uh, of the city of Flagstaff. Uh, so far, uh, we have gone through, we've issued about three million dollars of that debt. So we have quite a bit of, of balance remaining on that proposition and that authorization that the voters provided. Just to restate what the ballot language, um, consisted of, it was to provide for the construction and a renovation of facilities to be leased by General Services Administration, otherwise known as USGS, and others, and to allow the city to pledge state shared revenues or other revenues. Also in the pamphlet, the debt was not to exceed twenty-five years and not to have a rate above ten percent. So this has been a project and a work we've been doing for quite a while. May two thousand sixteen is when Charity Lee, uh, started the work on this, uh, with several staff members, as, as mentioned. Uh, we've been negotiating with them since May of two thousand sixteen. We've come around to council a few times to talk about how we're going to fund this project. And, uh, basically for the twenty-seven million, twenty-seven, eight million dollars project, we do have some reserves from previous payments that USGS made. So we're going to use three million dollars out of that reserve account. And that still leaves a substantial balance, uh, of a million or two for future renovations of the existing buildings. The remaining portion is what we're going to have to debt finance. And that's about the twenty-four point eight million dollars. Interest rates are pretty favorable nowadays and we do believe we can get around to three point five percent or even less, uh, as we go out to the market, uh, sometime next year. Uh, when we spoke to council, council authorized us to issue debt for a twenty-two to twenty-four year term. So again, that is less than a twenty-five from the ballot measure. Uh, but we wanted you to know that the term lease is really for twenty years with ten years firm. We do hope that USGS maintains their service in Flagstaff past that twenty years. Uh, if they do not, we would be able to rent out the property after that time. The initial lease payment is estimated just under two million dollars annually, which, uh, will pay for the debt service that we issuing, as well as it will be sending aside about eighty thousand dollars annually to pay for the insurances and maintenance and, uh, improvements that will be needed over the next twenty years. The FY twenty twenty-one budget does include the ten million dollars, which will start the project for design and construction. And the remaining budget will be budgeted in next fiscal year. Uh, you're not authorizing the debt issuance at this time, but staff will be bringing that forward, uh, to you as a debt financing ordinance next summer or fall as we get into the swing of construction. And that is the last of the presentation. One more bullet there, David. And that's the financing will be, uh, brought to you next summer. And with that, uh, any questions from council?
Counsel, are there any questions? Okay, there's, um, so Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Rick. Thank you for the presentation. I have a question. I, I have, in the past, chatted with, um, local, local builders and contractors. And, and they brought up the idea of, um, sorry, Mr. Bacon, um, of parcelling this out rather than having one contractor do, um, all the buildings and all the resi- renovations. Is there a way to do this so that maybe more local people, smaller, can bid on the job, but portions of the job rather than the whole thing? So perhaps now isn't the time to ask this question, but I, I would like it to be a consideration.
Councilmember Whelan, city staff will be, will be meeting next week to discuss how to move forward with the design-build process. And that's certainly something that we can bring up during that, that time.
Would you do that, David? Because I, I think even more so, um, to be able to kind of parcel, I don't parcel this job or, or separate this job so, um, smaller businesses can, can bid on the job rather than the whole thing, I think would help our community and our businesses. So I would really appreciate you checking into those things. Thank you.
Any other comments, counsel? With Mr. McCarthy?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I'm ready to make a motion that we approve the lease agreement with the GSA and authorize the city manager to execute the necessary documents.
So there's been a motion made by Ms. McCarthy and a second by the Vice Mayor. Vice Mayor, did you have a comment?
I just want to express gratitude to everybody working on this. I know it's been a long time coming and I'm excited to see this move forward. That's all. Thank you.
There's been a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to seven D. This is consideration adoption of Resolution number twenty twenty dash thirteen and Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten. This is a resolution of the Flagstaff City Council declaring a public record that a certain document filed with the city clerk entitled s- street lighting and traffic signals, signs and pavement marking code amendments. And an ordinance of the Flagstaff City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title thirteen, Engineering Design Standards and specifications. I'm not sure why it's doing that. Specifications for New Infrastructure. By adopting by reference that certain document entitled Street Lighting and Traffic Signals Signing and Pavement Marking Code Amendments, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability and establishing effective date. Staff's recommended action is that we adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen, that we read Resolution twenty, we read Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten by title only for the final time, and that we adopt Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten. So I believe that we talked about this in length the last time. Um, so I'm wondering if there is a motion?
Um, this is Jim McCarthy. I would like to move to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen.
This is Charlie. I second.
There's been a motion made by, um, Ms. McCarthy and a second by Mr. Odegaard to adopt Resolution twenty twenty dash thirteen. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
I would like to, I would like to move to read Ordinance twenty twenty dash ten by title only for the final time.
One second. Is there anyone opposed to the last motion? Okay, not seeing any. Mr. McCarthy?
Uh, first of all, I apologize for jumping the gun. Um, I move to read Ordinance twenty twenty dash ten by title only for the final time.
Is there a second? I'm looking for a second.
This is Charlie. I second.
There's been a motion made by Ms. McCarthy and a second by Mr. Odegaard to read Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten by title only for the final time. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title thirteen, Engineering Design Standards and Specifications for New Infrastructure. By adopting by reference that certain document entitled Street Lighting and Traffic Signals Signing and Pavement Markings Code Amendments, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability and establishing an effective date.
Is there a motion to adopt Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten?
So moved.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's been a motion made by Ms. McCarthy and a second by Mr. Aslan to adopt Ordinance number twenty twenty dash ten. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to seven E. Seven E is consideration and approval of a contract. It's a cooperative purchase contract with Cronos Incorporated. Staff's recommended action is that we approve this cooperative agreement. This is done through a cooperative purchase contract with Cobb County. And for the public sector, this is for payroll time entry software and implementation for amount not to exceed one hundred eighty-one thousand two hundred dollars.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, Brandy Suda, the city's finance director. So the item before you is a contract with Cronos for a tie, an automated time entry system called Cronos Workforce Dimensions. This contract includes implementation services as well as the first three years of the software use. Our current time entry process is a very manual process with admin staff manually entering individual employee time worked into our payroll system, followed by manual review by supervisors and payroll staff to ensure compliance with city policies and federal and state laws. This software will increase the city's city staff efficiency and overall save staff time from the manual time entry, as well as automating many checks and balances to ensure work and compliance with city policy and federal and state laws, as well as to increase and ensure accuracy, to ensure we're paying employees fairly and accurately, as well as many other benefits. I also would like to add that I did email Mayor Council prior to the meeting. We inadvertently attached Cobb County Contract one eight two two one to the staff summary. And in the contract, but the cooperative agreement should have been Contract one eight two two zero is the correct contract. And I have attached that to your email for your review. Contract eight, one eight two two one covers a different payroll software called Cronos Workforce Ready, where Contract one eight two two zero covers Cronos Workforce Dimension Software, which is what we are looking to implement. I'm available for any other questions you may have.
Counsel, do we have any questions on this, Suda? Ms. Whelan?
I I'm so grateful to read Brandy in the staff report that this will be compatible with the fire department's system and hopefully ease that strain on trying to keep track of all the hours and overtime hours. So I'm I'm happy to see that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there any further comments? Is there a motion, counsel?
This is Jim McCarthy. I move to approve item seven E.
Is there a second?
This is Charlie. I second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. McCarthy with a second by Mr. Odegaard to approve number seven E. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to a seven F. This is consideration adoption of ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-three. An ordinance amending the Flagstaff City Code Chapter one dash fourteen Personnel System in the Flagstaff Employee Handbook of Regulations, Chapter one dash ten dash zero seven zero, Employee Advisory Committee. Staff's recommended action is that we read ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-three by title only for the final time and then adopt ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-three. Is there a presentation of this one?
No. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and Council, Jeanne Gallagher, Director of Human Resources. And this is our final read. These are administrative updates to the Employee Advisory Committee ordinance and policy and I'm available to answer questions.
Counsel, are there any questions? If not, I'd like to take a motion, please.
This is Charlie. I move to approve seven F.
There a second?
Second, Jim McCarthy.
There's been a motion made.
Excuse me, I need to read it. I'm sorry, Mayor. So I make a motion to read ordinance number two zero two zero dash two three by title only for the final time. Thank you.
There's been a motion to read made by Mr. Odegaard with a second by Mr. McCarthy. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any, any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code Chapter one dash fourteen Personnel System in the Flagstaff Employee Handbook of Regulations, Section one dash ten dash zero seven zero, Employee Advisory Committee, providing for penalties, repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date.
Is there a motion to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-three?
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by the vice mayor to adopt ordinance number twenty twenty dash twenty-three. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. So before we go on to item number eight, we're going to go ahead and stop for a break at this time. And so we'll come back at four forty-five. Thank you. We are now down to item number eight. Item number eight is our public hearing items. We have one item tonight. This is item number eight A. To public hearing for the proposed public safety development fees referred to as impact fees. Staff's recommended action is that we hold the public hearing and provide notice to the public that on October twentieth, twenty twenty, we have it there scheduled for council's potential first read of an ordinance that would be adopting proposed public safety development fees. At this time, I'd like to open the public hearing.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. This is Tiffany Antall, Planning Director for, in the Community Development Division. And tonight I'm here to just briefly go over again the process for the adoption of the public safety development fees. In this year, this is my fifth time coming to you all to discuss the potential of the public safety fees. Oops. So every five years, state statute does require that all existing development fees be reviewed and updated. Our latest fees were adopted in twenty fourteen. Prior to updating fees, the city must first adopt a new land use assumption and infrastructure improvement plan. The draft ULI and IIP was presented to council in a work session on January seventh. A public hearing followed that on February eighteenth, and then the draft was adopted on April seventh. Following the adoption of the draft on April seventh, staff held a work session with city council to discuss the potential options for pursuing fees. And that was held on June thirtieth. On June thirtieth, we discussed multiple options. The preferred option is the fees that you'll see tonight, which includes going with what the outlined fees were in the land use assumption and infrastructure improvement plans, as well as considering the number of bedrooms within each dwelling unit. So the land use assumptions are the projections of changes in land use, densities and intensities for a period of at least ten years. The key land use assumptions for the city Flagstaff study are population, housing units, and employment projections. During the next ten years, citywide development projections indicate a population increase of about thirteen thousand and approximately three thousand jobs. Residential development accounts for sixty-seven percent of the functional population, while non-residential development is responsible for the remaining. Our service area is citywide. The components of the development fees cover incremental costs of facilities, apparatus, and communication equipment. And again, these fees are all those associated with growth and not with the current level of service. So the tenure demand is estimated as, for facilities, approximately additional eight thousand square feet at four point one million, an additional six units of apparatus at two point three million, and additional thirty-four units of communication equipment at two hundred and thirty thousand. And that's for the fire department. For the police department, again, incremental for facilities, vehicles, and communications equipment. For facilities, it's about sixty-four hundred square feet at two point four million, fourteen vehicles at six hundred seventy thousand and thirty-seven units of communications equipment at three hundred and thirty-five thousand. So here are the proposed fire fees that we are looking at and would be included in the ordinance to be submitted to council for first read on October twentieth of this year. These are the proposed fire fees. So you can see the cost per person and the cost per job. Cost per person is what helps us create the per unit cost. And the cost per job is what helps us create the fees for the industrial, commercial, office, hotel, nursing home, and assisted living components. You can see here the breakdown. The option that council selected on June thirtieth was including the distribution of bedrooms and the range of fees per each bedroom unit. So this, these are the proposed fire fees. And here are the proposed police fees. Again, same breakdown you'll see. And then there's the cost per person and the cost per trip. These are calculated per vehicle mile trip. And then combined, which is generally what folks want to see. So here are our current fees on the left. They, those are what were adopted in twenty fourteen. So you can see the combined fee for a single family is five hundred forty-eight. The combined fee for multi-family was five hundred and twelve. The proposed fees will range based on the number of bedrooms. But for single family, we'll go anywhere from eleven hun, approximately eleven hundred dollars to just over two thousand dollars, depending on the number of bedrooms. And multi-family will go anywhere from nine hundred and sixty-two per unit to just over two thousand dollars per unit. The rest of the fees are calculated on a per square foot, so it's harder to show you that differential. But I'm here and I would be happy to answer, try to answer any questions that you have tonight.
So, Mr. McCarthy, do you have a comment or do you have a question?
Well, actually, I have one of each. Shall I ask my question now and hold my comment?
Yes, please.
Tiffany, on the bottom of one of your slides, it's the slide that says land use assumptions. It says residential development accounts for sixty-seven percent of functional population with non-residential development responsible for the remaining thirty-three percent. I don't know what that means. Does that mean the percentage of the projects or the the funding? This is the word population. What's, what do you mean by the word population? That's number of people?
So the fire and police facilities and development fees are assessed on both residential and non-develop, and non-residential development based on functional population. So those are the number of people occupying space in the community on a twenty-four hour per day, seven day per week basis. So sixty-seven percent of our functional population is, it comes from residential development, while the remaining comes from non-residential development. So we have people that occupy space in our commercial projects as well.
Okay. And then my comment will hold until the mayor thinks it's a good time.
Are there any other questions for Ms. Antall? I'm going to go to public comment first, then I'll come back to Mr. McCarthy.
Thank you, Mayor. I have David Hayward on the line with me to offer the first public comment. Mr. Hayward, you can go ahead.
Hi, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you. Thanks for taking my comment today. I'm a local developer. I'm also on one of the boards for the city and a member of the Chamber of Commerce. My, you know, the difficult part for me with sort of these issues, right, is that obviously this is a, this is a tax on my product, right? The homes that, you know, we build and sell and the apartments that we build and rent. You know, these are fees that we are paying, you know, effectively as taxes on those items. So it's, you know, it would be very easy for me to say, you know, no, I don't like this simply because it's an additional tax. That is not the case. I would say I I support the the concept of the development fees in general. And very, I'm very much in support of the idea of, you know, replacing the, you know, protracted, difficult, and often political negotiations that we have when it comes to larger land deals over the exactions and the specific cost sharing that those new developments have to, you know, I have to take, you know, the burden of which they have to take their part. What, what, what I struggle with when I see this specific proposal is that the consultant's report to me reads as what is the maximum fee that would be allowable under the state law that governs these development fees? Not necessarily what is the actual amount that is required to to fund those capital expenditures. And, you know, the detail of that, that kind of specific numbers is something I put in an email and sent to you guys. So that, that, that's one item. The second item that that I really, really feel strongly about and, you know, would like you to consider is how, if we're making a policy shift from a position where new development is some, not something that, the burden of that is negotiated on a case by case basis, but to one where we are, you know, we're setting a flat fee for those based on the the units or the bedroom count or whatever it may be, is that we don't double dip and so that we ensure the, we ensure that the exactions are replaced by the development fee and that we don't get both. Because that could, you know, that that could take, instead of solving the problem that is hampering, you know, providing affordable housing, where instead, you know, making it stuff. Thanks very much for taking the time to listen to my comment.
Thank you. We have a question, Ms. Whelan? Ms. Whelan?
Yes, thank you. Mr. Hayward, I I've been listening to you and I certainly have read and reread your email. And, and these are, the points that you're bringing up are concerning me that I feel as though I don't have a good, solid understanding of how these things were missed. Or maybe they weren't missed, but the impacts of, for example, a hundred and ninety-five percent increase in the taxes placed on new single-family housing in Flagstaff certainly alarm me. And and I'm just wondering if you could say more on that and if perhaps staff could also say more about that? And what else so astounds me is you're still in favor of this because you see it as an answer to our housing crisis, to looking at things in a open, black fee way versus the negotiation. And so my question is this. Help me understand. And so my question is this, help me understand. What does a hundred and ninety-five percent increase? Is that you're talking and speaking about?
So, I mean, what that would mean, you know, to take a specific project, right, we have thirty-two units under. Review right now. It's forty-eight thousand dollars under the new. There's the new fee guidelines, right, as opposed to a third of that. So quite frankly, out of an eight million dollar project. Is that isn't necessarily going to have an outsized impact. For a project like mine, right, that's thirty-two. But if I'm about to buy the piece of state land, you know, that's coming up auction on October twenty-second and that's. You know, four hundred and twenty-five acres, like you're talking about, you know, a, a bigger chunk of change. So no one, no one wants to take money out of their pocket and give it to the government, you know, unless there's a good reason for it. Obviously, police and fire are good reasons for it. But that's part of what I said, what my, you know, you know, was trying to emphasize was that. You know, if that's the case and these budgets are needed, then a bit more care needs to be put in to determine what the real amount of that. The, the second, you know, to answer, I think what's really, it was your first question. The thirty-two units that I built doesn't make a dent in, you know, the demand for housing that we have in Flagstaff. And it's that demand that's driving prices up and, you know, making the city unaffordable. For so many, you know, so many residents, especially that, you know, that the low ends of the income scale. What does make a difference are, you know, large developments like Canyon Del Rio and Juniper Point. And those are the ones that end up being delayed for, you know, a decade. Because that it's so difficult for both staff and the investors in those projects to negotiate. You know, who pays for this piece of road widening? Who pays for this traffic light? You know, this sewer extension, all of those things, right? So as long as it, it, what I hope and I, you know, and I, I believe this is what Tiffany's trying to do because she's, you know, done a great job of taking on. You know, a difficult issue is push away from that negotiation process. To one where these things are set on a fee basis. And we can maybe get, you know, we can get these deals done in five years instead of, instead of ten years. And so if the cost to all of us is, you know, is a slightly increased tax, then I think, I do think that's a price worth paying.
Thank you. And just a follow-up question. When you talk about the, the real numbers. And you speak about depreciation versus looking at things as brand new. Could you say a little bit more than that? Would, is that what you're saying would give us better figures? Than what the, the recommendation has come up with?
Hey, I can try to, and you know, my mom, who is an actual accountant, would probably cringe at anything I'm about to tell you. Was the, you know, the. The, the process for those development fees, right, that's set by the state, as, as far as my understanding. Is, is a pretty prescriptive set of rules that has to be followed as to, you know, what is allowable. And so the consultant's report has effectively said, you know, this is what is allowable in terms of fees under the. You know, under the state guidelines. Whether that is the, the, the true amount that's necessary for the city to. Invest over the next ten years to maintain the level of service for thirteen thousand additional residents. It strikes me that the, you know, the methodology that was used to achieve that number is. You know, i- is flawed. And it, I mean, primarily comes down to the fact that, you know, we. We are not providing fire service for our current seventy-five thousand residents. With two brand-new one point four million dollar ladder trucks. We're doing it with, you know, one ladder truck that if you went, turned around and tried to sell it right now, you might get, you know, forty grand for it. And one that's worth, you know, a, a few hundred thousand dollars. So the, the cost of providing those services for the assets, you know, and if you, I would say if you need a. Or wants a real detailed explanation of this, you, you probably need to find someone who's better qualified than I am, but. Is, is based on the, you know, the depreciated value of those assets because we've owned them for a long time. They've already been used for a long time. We've got a lot of benefit out of them. We don't base it on the simple replacement cost of those items.
Well, thank you. And when there's time, I'd love to hear what Tiffany thinks about these items. Thank you.
I'm going to go to Ms. Solis first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hayward, I, I do appreciate your. Your efforts in articulating your perspective, you know, it sounds like you've been in the field. For quite some times and you know what you're talking about. You mentioned earlier that you would support the use of development fees. In lieu of exactions for achieving appropriate cost sharing for infrastructure demands related to new development. But you pointed out some, some flaws in the methodology. And you had mentioned to, in your earlier comment that you would like to. To see actual numbers when it comes to a cost estimate on capital improvement. For police, fire facilities, vehicles and communications. And I believe that was, those were reflected in, 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 in the packet. So what, sorry, what would you recommend, what would you recommend in terms of? Methodology or the, the computation since you are like. You know, in principle would, would support the development fee but have issues with. The computations that were provided by staff. So I would like to hear from you in terms of what your recommendations are.
Sure. The, the, the primary thing that jumped out at me reading through the report. Was the, you know, the, the capital, I can't remember the exact name of the, the table, but it was the, effectively the capital. Needs for the fire department over the next ten years. Right, which is, I believe it was around thirteen million dollars. Which is on a, you know, a current. Asset schedule that was around twenty million dollars. So we're talking about over the next ten years, we need to invest an additional thirteen million dollars into the fire department. If the fire department, you know, says that's what they need, I have no reason to doubt them. I do doubt however that that need is based on the increase in population. You know, the assumption that we're using, which is only thirteen thousand people versus the seventy-five thousand that we have. In the city right now. So that, that's, you know, how do we? The system that the state guidelines effectively say that we have to use. To determine the maximum amount that the city would be allowed to set for development fees. Doesn't give us a good number for what is actually needed. So what part of that fire? Capital budget is due to, you know, that thirteen percent growth over the next ten years. And what is due to replacing, you know, obsolete equipment like the two. You know, ladder trucks that we have now that, you know, are old and on their way out. And then, you know, the same would apply for, for the, for the police department. And so I, I don't know, I don't think that that was the brief that the consultant was given. I think the brief with the consultant was given was. Determine based on the state allowance, you know, what, what, what is achievable. Not necessarily what we need. And I think that's valid, given, you know, that this is, this is driven by the planning department who. You know, can only look to their portion of the development fees and can't, you know, can't force the police or the fire department to the table to have. You know, a real discussion about, you know, what, what their capital expenditure needs are, are over the next ten years. And then how much that's going to be driven by new development versus existing, existing conditions or existing shortages.
I'm going to go to Ms. McCarthy's question, but then I'd like to go back to Ms. Antal. Because I do think that the, the question that the speaker is asking can be answered. And so, Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, my comment is on something. Not directly related to this, so it might make more sense to have Mrs., Ms. Tiffany. To answer those questions and then come back to my new concept.
Okay. Ms. Anton. Ms. Anton.
I think she ran away. No, I double muted myself. I apologize. Thank you, thank you very much. This is Tiffany Antal. So it is very important to realize that our consultants not only worked with planning and zoning staff. We definitely helped come up with the, the land use component in terms of growth and, and what we see happening. But it, this is also in collaboration with both police and fire. So they have both been involved in generating what is necessary for their basically improvement plans. So the planning department does not set out what the needs are of the fire department or the police department. But for the fire facilities, infrastructure improvement plan. The Flagstaff Fire Department identified necessary improvements to support future growth. And they estimated a need of equipment and facilities and communications. That was estimated around thirteen million. Which only a portion can be funded by development fees. These necessary improvements are, are laid out in that infrastructure improvement plan and, and we've discussed these before. But they do include potentially two new fire stations, four apparatus and twenty-five pieces of equipment. Through the tabulation and the report, the, the, the estimate amount of funding that could be recouped through development fees. Is at about six million. So it, it doesn't, it doesn't go as high as what the, at the fire department. Would need in total throughout their budget and throughout the next ten years. But you can see that gross portion of that would be about six million. For police, their identification was a little bit lower. Their total improvements came out at about seven point five million. What the portion of that that could be taken care of through development fees and gross proportionate share. Would be about three point four million. So it's important to keep that in mind that the total needs of both police and fire department are much larger. Than what growth itself can accommodate. Some of, some of this is not necessarily always about replacement equipment, but it is about looking at new equipment. And, and I know that the police and fire department are most likely present and they can probably back up these statements. And it's the information that I've heard from them before. And that is, is that. You know, when we are creating this infrastructure improvement plan, it's based on the, the estimates for equipment at the time. That we're developing these plans. Ten years down the line, by the time we have the funds to actually pay for the fire equipment, what we've found in years past. Is, is that the cost of the equipment has grown out of our reach even further. And so again, everything is really based on estimates. It's estimates for growth. Those can vary through time, same as the cost for the equipment and the facilities. In terms of trying to estimate costs for the facilities, we talked about land cost. There's potential, which is again, always a fluctuating cost through time. So none of this is really a perfect, and I would love it if, if Chief Gaylord would weigh in. But none of this is a perfect science. The one thing that I do want to stress and why you're seeing. A significant increases that our development fees have only gone down over the years. So our fees when they were first adopted in two thousand and eight were higher than the fees that we currently have in place. And so just to brush on what that looks like. In two thousand and eight, our combined fees for a single family home were seven hundred dollars. In two thousand and eleven, when we updated our fees again, they went down to six hundred and seventy-five dollars. In two thousand and fourteen, when we updated our fees again, they went down again to five hundred and forty-eight dollars. So one of the important points to realize is why it feels as if it's a significant increase. Is because we've, we've chosen over time to adopt a lower fee than what we could adopt. Based on our infrastructure improvement plans. And again, we went over those options in June. How we could look at these fees over time. And I just to remind you, you know. We can adopt the fees that we're proposing right now that are shown to you. We could look at doing them without the bedrooms and just doing a flat rate for each residential unit. We could, we could go back and relook at our infrastructure improvement plans and redo that process. We could look at, look at adopting our fees incrementally. One of the other things to remember though, when we went through that process. And I'll finish up here really quick is, is that we did a comparison with other similar sized communities in Arizona. And our current fees are by far some of the lowest in the state of Arizona right now for police and fire. And that these proposed fees bring us more in line with other communities. And again, I, I have that information if necessary, but I'd like to relinquish the floor to Chief Gaylord and Chief Musselman.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I don't know what to say. Tiffany has done such a really great job. I will just say, having been around growth environments and the use of impact fees for quite some time. A couple of things are really important to note about our Flagstaff experience. And I think Tiffany noted, one of them is. The idea that perhaps a public policy decision made in the past to not recover all those funds that could be attributed to growth. And that it certainly is your decision here this evening. What we face in, in Flagstaff is a potential new growth area. And so much of what's been described in the. The improvement plan has to do with addressing growth in the new area. We're, in fact, we were in just conversations with community development about this JW Powell growth area. That will require a new station. Growth is also having us rethink. And one of the capital projects is the potential relocation of an older station to an area that's more suitable to serve the existing development. And future development. And in that particular scenario, and it's a good scenario in this case. We could not use one hundred percent development impact fees to relocate that since it already is a service to an existing portion of the community. But a portion of it could be. So just to kind of reiterate, it's, it's, in our case, we're taking a look at what growth requirements are. And I'll remind you that you look at a fire station and we certainly have seen evidence of that over the last few days. We, our folks cross-staffed quint apparatus to deal with the high-rise demands for service, which over the past ten years. uh, demands for service, which over the past 10 years have really changed the landscape of protection in Flagstaff is the increase in high-rise construction. We're in the middle of the forest, so we have a great commitment to equipment in those growth areas. And the next growth area is going to be in the wildland urban interface area. And so there's equipment in there for wildland units and responses. And so just to kind of bring clarity to that, our work with the consultant wasn't, uh, trying to reach a number. It was trying to reach a service level. And quite honestly, we couldn't quite get there in some cases. And so what we did was we defined what that growth need looks like, worked with the consultant to appropriately allocate, uh, an amount that could be attributed to a user fee, which is, is, and so at the end of the day for us, and I think the public policy question continues to be, you know, the growth is going to occur. And so it continues to be, well, who will pay for the growth? Will it be the user fees associated with the impact fee? Or will it be taxation across the larger community later? Uh, I, I'm, I hope I haven't confused the issue. I'd love to, uh, answer any questions you may have of me. But I know Chief Musselman is also, uh, ready and willing to, to weigh in.
Chief Musselman?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. And I would agree with Chief Gaylord that Tiffany did an excellent job. What we need to be sure we're aware of is that these development fees will not pay for new staff positions due to growth. The city's general fund or grants will have to pay for those. But this does allow us a way to recoup capital expenses that are strictly due to growth. And we have, even though our previous development fees were pretty low, we have struggled, um, to purchase new equipment due to growth. And we are still struggling with that, uh, mostly in our storage departments of evidence at the police department. And we've had to be pretty creative. And we've actually had to start storing other people's property outside, which in our elements causes it to get damaged, which isn't best practice for sure. So, um, being allowed to use these fees to pay for the capital expenses, um, helps relieve pressure on the general fund. And I'll bounce a, a question back to Tiffany, but it was my understanding that, um, the need will be in the sake of the police department, you know, 13 cars to the tune of whatever, $335,000. And if new growth does not pay for that, somehow that fund has to be made whole. And that money would be pulled from the general fund in order to get us there. At least that's, I believe, how the consultant explained it to us, um, through some of our meetings. But we're definitely going to need facility expansion. We're definitely going to need more vehicles. And we're definitely going to need more communications equipment. Uh, just an example, the handheld radios that your officers use, um, cost roughly $8,000 apiece. New dispatch consoles are $25,000 to $30,000 apiece. And we have been, uh, pushing our capacity in the dispatch center for several years now because we've put off, expanding it because we didn't have the money to expand it. And the reason we need to expand it is to do the growth. We're taking more calls. We're servicing more departments and the need is definitely there. And if I can answer any questions.
Any questions for our two chiefs? So if not, we're going to go to our second public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got Joe Gally on the line. And Joe, if you'd like to go ahead and start your comments, we are ready.
Thank you very much. This is Joe Gally, Senior Advisor of Public Policy at the Greater Flagstaff Chamber of Commerce. And appreciate staff's time and your honor and council members, your attention on these important issues as it relates to development fees. Chamber Board has traditionally been opposed to, uh, these types of fees for several reasons. And they include, uh, they merely are pass-through costs and raise the cost of homeownership. Of course, you've heard me say before that we do the quarterly study on, uh, cost of living in Flagstaff. And our housing cost range between 39 to 45%, uh, higher than the national average, uh, quarter over quarter, year over year. And, uh, you know, we need to be headed in a direction that moves that down and not, uh, up. And this moves that up. Uh, so we take it to pass-through cost to homeowners. But more important, I think we'd be open, and David Hayward sits on our business advocacy division. I, I caught the tail end of his presentation. Uh, he's a very good spokesman on this issue and would probably defer more to his thoughts. But, you know, and we're going to hear from staff, Tiffany and Dan on Thursday morning. And we're excited to get an update on this, uh, for our business advocacy division on this subject. But we'd be interested if, in entertaining development fees, if we knew exactions were going away in the development agreements. And so there's a trade-off there. And, and we certainly would take one or the other, but we can't have both. Couple other thoughts, and then I'm happy to take questions. You know, one thing that the consultant, and I don't see the consultant factors in here, there's a lot of talk about growth paying for growth, of course. And in the traditional sense of growth paying for growth, it's called property taxes. And those are revenues that are generated when a new home is built and a new family moves into that home. And they pay those property taxes to the municipality. And those property taxes are supposed to be used for things like police and fire in the community. But the consultant never factors in, uh, you know, looking at 13,412 new residents, what those property taxes are, are going to be when it comes into the fee discussion. And we're always just talking about, well, what the fee revenue is going to generate. But on the backend, we never talk about the money that go to the general fund that are supposed to be used for these very important needs. And no one takes anything away from our police and fire chief and those needs. We want to see those, uh, the equipment get upgraded and those things, uh, get done and meet the demand. But does it really have to be through a development fee? And then finally I'll end with this, you know, we're in a period where the business community has been flat on its back. And outing cost to housing in, in, in trying to move forward out of this downturn from a COVID-19 economy at this point in time, we still think it's a good idea. And those are my thoughts. Happy to have more discussion on this and hopefully we can be back in front of each other soon and engage personally on these important issues for our community. Thank you.
Are there any questions for Mr. Gally? Okay, I'm going to go back to Mr. McCarthy.
Well, thank you, Mayor. Um, I just want to kind of talk philosophically for a second, and then that will lead to a proposal that I have. When we, when I hear people say this adds to the cost of housing, well, the question is which housing? Because if we don't have impact fees, then the only way we can pay for these things is by raising the property taxes. So in effect, we would have existing neighborhoods increase the cost of their housing to subsidize the cost of new construction. To me, that's not appropriate. I think development should pay for itself as opposed to having existing homes subsidize new development. I do support these fees and would like to point out that should be obvious that these are not for roads and sewer lines and things like that. This is only for police and fire. So we will probably continue to do exactions on sewer lines and water lines and, and, and street construction. Uh, for one reason is it's so hard to predict what the cost will be because it varies so much on depending on where the construction will be. But the cost of fire and, and police, we can, um, estimate pretty accurately what the cost will be if we get new, uh, areas. Now, if, if that building doesn't happen, then we won't need those police and fire. So, um, the other thing I would like to say on the philosophy viewpoint is I have been looking into what we can do to facilitate housing construction. And one thing that I think we could do here, and this comes to my idea, is, and this is not my idea, it's an idea I've gotten from builders, is instead of having the builders pay the impact fee when they take out their building permit, let them pay the impact fee at occupancy, when they get a certificate, certificate of occupancy. And that would really facilitate, uh, building and help builders, you know, build houses. But we would still get the money and we would get it when we need it. So, uh, that's my proposal, that the payment would be later, not at building permit stage, but would be at, uh, certificate of occupancy stage. Thank you.
All right, and any other comments, Council? Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And Councilmember McCarthy, I appreciate your, your comment. I think that's very interesting. You know, I, you know, there, there's one thing that we've witnessed during this time of COVID is that construction has not slowed down. And, and please do correct me if I'm wrong, City Manager, but from my understanding, construction has been full speed ahead. And for the good and for the bad, that's what we have here in Flagstaff. And, and it's a blessing to a degree for sure. And that, you know, the cost of housing, as we all know, is, is really a product of supply and demand. Sure, these fees weigh into the cost, but at the end of the day, the cost of housing in Flagstaff is supply and demand. And, and like Councilmember McCarthy said, I too agree, growth should be paying for itself and that we shouldn't be subsidizing, subsidizing this new growth with our existing neighborhoods and existing homeowners. So my, my, those are my comments. And my, my question, Mayor, for staff is, uh, just in follow-up to Councilmember McCarthy's, um, idea, what are your thoughts of having these fees paid when the certificate of occupancy is issued versus, rather than when a building permit, at the building permit stage?
City Manager? We have, uh, well, we have Rick Tatter. I'm going to go to City Manager, then I'm going to go to Rick Tatter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be brief. I was just, uh, going to, uh, uh, support what the Vice Mayor said in terms of the building industry being strong. Yes, that is a correct statement. Uh, it has been very helpful. Thank you.
Mr. Tatter?
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Um, just responding on a timing of collection of fees. Uh, I think we'll have to get some legal opinion on that and look at, uh, the process. Because basically if they are due at the point of them, uh, pulling the permits and, uh, doing the construction, uh, so there may be gifting issues, gifting clauses, or the fact that we're given a short-term loan or so forth for these types of fees that are due to the city at that time. Uh, so that would probably take a little, a bit of research with legal and, uh, CD and finance and management services.
Um, Mr. McCarthy? Oh, wait, sorry. I see Ms. Whelan, and then I have Mr. McCarthy.
I would just like to take a moment and thank everyone, um, for this discussion. You know, it, it, it really is amazing to be part of this team and council, to consider all the things, um, and with community members that, that we consider. And this is, this is one of them, um, that we, that's difficult. And I remember Councilmember Overton always saying, if, if it's a yes-no decision, it shouldn't be in front of council. So my question is, Tiffany, are, are we looking at eventually getting rid of exactions?
Good evening, Council Tiffany Antall. Um, so back in January, we actually presented two different work sessions. One was specifically in regards to the fact that police and fire fees are at their five-year timeframe and they need to be updated. Um, but we also talked about the fact at the time that there were funds available, um, to look at creating or doing a plan to look at other fees. So when we approached development fees in 2008, we looked at the full gamut of fees that we could assess, um, through development fees in that, at that time, it was close to about $15,000, um, per single-family home. Um, and again, all the, the city chose to move forward with was police and fire. Back in January, we discussed this issue through another work session. You know, we went out and had communications with the broader community. Um, and it seemed with COVID that maybe it was not the right time to push the conversation, um, on other development fees. And we needed to really focus on where we are going with police and fire. If it is the desire of Council, we can start that conversation again about where we go with other development fees. And again, the, the topics are broader than what we do for exactions now. Exactions usually come with what's called an impact analysis. So you're very comfortable, and I've seen lots of TIA's at this point, so that's the traffic impact analysis. So that certainly helps us to identify what a developer's proportionate share is and what their direct impacts potentially are, um, on the transportation network. We also do what's called a water sewer impact analysis, um, and that lets us assess, uh, what infrastructure needs are necessary in order to support the proposed development and what the proposed development might need to pay, um, in terms of, and I apologize, my dog is barking, and what the development may need to pay in order to support those resources. Also, we do what's called a, potentially we do what's called a drainage impact analysis, um, in terms of how that development supports or doesn't support, or is supported by existing drainage facilities or if additional drainage facilities are required. So those are the, the big ones that we focus on. It doesn't mean that we haven't looked at exactions in the past. And exactions are something we also interrelate as staff with Council on. So examples of exactions, I mean, we have, um, for example, had developers agree to contribute more to police and fire, um, based on their development and potential constraints of their development. McGrath Development is a, is a fairly good example. They had contributions to affordable housing. They had contributions to, um, both the police and fire department. We don't have impact analyses to work with or, um, really create a proportional share for developers. That's really a conversation with the developer and what they feel that they may want to do. But, you know, certainly other development fees are, are, are something that we can look at. I know the big ones that people really tend to focus on tend to be the transportation-related impacts.
Thank you very much.
I want to, I, I'm going to go to Ms. McCarthy, and then I have a, a comment. Ms. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I just want to, uh, suggest that, uh, and I'm responding to Rick Tatter's comments, that I, I do think it would be worthwhile to see if we could, uh, allow the builders to pay later in the process. And I base that on conversations I've had with quite a few builders back when I was getting petitions. And, uh, they suggested that would really help them. And, you know, a lot of people are down on developers, but guess what? Developers are the ones that build us housing and we need housing. So if we can help them, uh, build more housing, uh, we should do that. So it, it would be worth looking into. Thank you.
So we would just need to get direction on that particular comment. I actually think that that's a very good idea, so I would lend my support to that. I want to mention, um, that there's two different things. I know that we talked about this before, but I really want to just remind Council. There really, in my mind, needs a further, um, conversation with regards to, um, development fees versus extractions. And the reason being is that, I know when I got on Council in 2008, we had this conversation. At that particular time, I think if we added up everything we needed to do for development fees, because this included parks, it included our libraries, include things like that, it was like $24,000. There's a study that said that. So Council, of course, did not approve those types of development fees, development fees, because we were talking about affordable housing. And so I think at that time, we only had development fees for, for police and fire. I think that's all we still have today. I think one of the things that we hear from the larger developers, like the Pine, the Pine Canyon, the Presidio, those types of developers, is that they would like for us to just give them an impact fee rather than do the extractions. They want to know exactly how much money it is for each rooftop, and they just want to write us a check. And I think that that works for larger developers. But I think we need to be mindful that it's a one-size-fits-all type of a thing we would have to do. And that doesn't necessarily work for the small builders, and I think that's the problem. You have small builders that build tin houses. You have small builders that build tin houses a year, maybe they build 20. And for them to have to just write a check for those types of impact fees, rather than go through the negotiation process, could be make or break for them. It could decide whether or not they built the house at all, having to come up with that money. Now, maybe one way to assist those smaller builders is to be able to have them pay that at the time they get the occupancy permit, right? Or pay half of it upfront and half of it at the end. But I do think we need to be mindful, because I think that this comes down to a legal requirement where you can't say builders over 50 houses a year can just do impact fees, and people under that can do the extraction. So I just think we need to be mindful. Mr. McCarthy? I mean, sorry, Ms. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to weigh in and support Mr. McCarthy's idea of his ask of taking a look at when the fees are being paid. I'd I'd like also be in support of that. And, you know, just weigh in on this conversation. You know, you know, the community has a lot of wants from, you know, parks and libraries and and services, whether it's from police and fire and from other parts in the city, but it's always costs and limited dollars. And of course, our general fund budget is very limited in dollars. And so, but thank you for the comment.
So are there any more comments, Council? So I'm wondering if staff could look into, how many people are interested in whether or not we can have the development fees paid at the end? So I'm gonna go to Mr. Aslan, and I'll go back to Ms. To Ms. Antle.
I am interested in that, and I thank Mr. McCarthy for bringing it up as an option.
Ms. Antle?
Yes, and thank you very much. I was just informed by our Housing Director that our current incentive policy actually allows for the deferment of fees, specifically development fees. So we'll definitely spend some time and look into that and come back with options for you.
Let's go to Ms. 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 Whelan.
I would, I would agree with that and support Councilmember McCarthy's request.
Okay, so does staff have everything that they need at this particular time from council on this item? I'm gonna take that as a yes.
We do. Yes, thank you.
I just wanna say, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I'd just like to say, do I need to close the public hearing? City Attorney?
Mayor, this is Stacy, the City Clerk. Yes, you will need to close that public hearing this evening.
Okay, so I'm gonna go ahead now and close the public hearing. And then this is just to provide notice to the public that on October 20th, 2020, we are scheduled for the council's potential first read on an ordinance that will be adopting the proposed public safety development fees that you saw in this presentation. With that, we're gonna move forward to item number nine. This is our regular agenda. The first one is item number, item number nine A, consideration and adoption of resolution number 2020-54 between the State of Arizona Department of Public Safety and the city regarding the Gang and Immigration Intelligence Team Enforcement Mission, GIDUM, State Gang Task Force. This is staff recommended actions that we read resolution number 2020-54 by title only and adopt resolution number 2020-54. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Evans. This is Colin C., Lieutenant of the Police Department. Just wanted to discuss this IGA a little bit. It's gonna be an agreement between the Police Department and Arizona Department of Public Safety. It's basically gonna be a five year extension of our current agreement. I think we've been doing it for at least over the last 20 years, so it was up for renewal. The immediate financial benefit is written in the IGA is that they're gonna pay for one or 75% of one officer's salary. So there's a financial savings to the city, and then in return also, we get an officer assigned to the gang task force that's gonna combat street gang related and other violent offenders. In 2020, we have had two to three incidents involving street gang members. They also address graffiti issues that occur in town, specifically gang related graffiti. They work with youth, youth outreach and work closely with school resource officers when they go back to school for doing anti-gang education. I think that's one of the best benefits is creating the awareness when they're young, so hopefully they can not go down that path when they become adults. So I'll have any, I'll be here to answer any questions you have about this IGA.
Council? I need a motion?
Yeah, Mayor, this is Charlie, and I'll I'll provide that motion to read resolution number 2020-54 by title only.
Is there a second? Is there a second?
Yes. And that's Salas.
That's fine.
So there's a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Ms. Salas to read resolution number 2020-54 by title only. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Quick question. So the position that we're we're talking about, that's being funded with support by the state, is that position for someone locally here in Flagstaff?
Yeah, thank you, sir. Yeah, it's one of our local sworn police officers. They have to be an Arizona post sworn police officer. And it is one of our patrol officers that gets selected based on their community policing efforts to be assigned to that task force, usually for a two to three year period, and it kind of rotates.
Okay, thank you very much.
There's been a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to item number nine B, consideration.
Sorry. I am sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
I'll need to read that. Your honor, roll. A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council approving an intergovernmental agreement for the Gang and Immigration Intelligence Team Enforcement Mission, GIDUM, State Task, State Gang Task Force.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-54?
This is Charlie, move to adopt.
And who's the second?
Second, Salas.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Odegaard and a second by Ms. Salas to adopt resolution number 2020-54. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We are now down to item number nine B. This is consideration adoption of resolution number 2020-53. A resolution amending the IGA between NAU and the city of Flagstaff, covering the composting partnership to extend the IGA for one year. Staffs recommend action that we read resolution 2020-53 by title only and then adopt.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. This is Dylan Lundzen, Sustainability Specialist. With this presentation, I'll provide a very brief background on our partnership with NAU as you consider whether to renew this intergovernmental agreement. So you may recall that this pilot IGA was approved by City Council in October of 2019 with the goal of piloting the collection and processing of city organic waste at NAU's composting operation. This pilot allows specific sections, such as our parks, solid waste and sustainability sections, to explore how to capture different types of organic waste produced within Flagstaff. And since we're utilizing NAU to process all that material, the city is able to evaluate such efforts without the significant financial investment required to start a composting operation. And the existing pilot IGA does not have any financial considerations as we are using this temporary agreement to explore costs for both parties. That will be considered when drafting a long term IGA at the close of this one. And then when it was adopted in last October, the agreement allowed for a one year, one year renewal term to allow us to continue exploring and evaluating the partnership, which is what you are considering today. If you approve this renewal term, the IGA will expire in October of 2021. And so far, we've seen multiple positive outcomes come from this partnership. Our efforts to date have focused mostly on organic waste from our parks throughout the city, such as grass clippings, pine needles and leaves. Even with this narrow scope, we have diverted over 200,000 pounds of of those materials that would have otherwise gone man fill. And with your approval today, over the course of the the coming renewal term, there are a few other opportunities that we'd like to explore. Specifically, we'd like to figure out how to offer a commercial food scrap collection service throughout, through our solid waste section that would divert food scraps and grocery, from grocery stores and restaurants. We'd also like to explore ways to capture some of our, some of the yard waste produced by Flagstaff residents. And these are all efforts that are dependent upon the city's recession planning and where we are in that plan. But we will be exploring ways to carry them forward in some fashion over the coming year, including through actively pursuing grant opportunities. In summary, if council approves this one year renewal term, it will allow the city and NAU to continue with the pilot and planned diversion efforts as well as continue to evaluate the costs and benefits of this partnership. At the close of this one year term, we will have the information needed to develop a framework for a long term partnership that includes all of those financial considerations and detailed roles and responsibilities for both parties as part of a longer term intergovernmental agreement. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you have about the IGA.
Council? I don't see any questions. Is there a motion?
Mayor, I'm happy to.
I I see Vice Mayor?
So, Mayor, I just wanted also to put out a comment and just say to Dylan and to our partners NAU, thank you. I think this is a great program, and I'm very excited to hear about this update and that we're continuing forward. So with that, I'd like to provide that motion. Let me open up the language. I apologize. I would like to move that we read resolution number 2020-53 by title only.
Mr. Aslan?
I would second that.
There's been a motion made by the Vice Mayor and a second by Mr. Aslan to read resolution number 2020-53 by title only. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you.
A resolution of the Flagstaff City Council amending an intergovernmental agreement between the Arizona Board of Regents for and on behalf of Northern Arizona University and the city of Flagstaff for the processing of organic material produced within city limits at the university's processing facility.
Is there a motion to adopt resolution number 2020-53?
So moved.
Second.
There's been a motion made by Mr. Aslan and a second by Mr. McCarthy. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you. We're now down to item number C. This is consideration adoption of ordinance number 2020-24, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title II Boards and Commissions by adding a new chapter, by adding a new chapter two dash 26, creating an Indigenous Commission. Staff's recommended action at this meeting is to read ordinance number 2020-24 by title only for the first time.
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Yat, greetings to all of you. As customary, I'd like to introduce myself by my clans for my Indigenous relatives, colleagues and the public. I am Tachitni Nautai, which is Red Street Running Into the Water, born for Kinlachitni, the Red House Clan. My maternal grandfathers are Ashihi, the Salt Clan, and my paternal grandfathers are Hashka Hanzohi, which is Yakafut Strung Together. My name is Rose Tohe, and I'm the Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives. So tonight, what we have here is the, your consideration and adoption of this ordinance to create an Indigenous Commission. So on October 10th, 2017, the Flagstaff City Council had made a commitment to the Indigenous citizens and communities to address the recommendations received from the six citywide Indigenous forums in the collaboration with with Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff. So the City Council further made a commitment to realize the creation of an Indigenous Commission to help advise City Council on carrying out these recommendations. The Indigenous Commission will serve as a communication bridge to Indigenous citizens and populations through the Office of Coordinator for Indigenous Initiatives to City Council. And then and then on, on May 26, 2020, during the work plan presentation, council had briefly discussed the need to create the Indigenous Commission and also had discussions in the past. On July 7, 2020, I made a presentation on the commission and committees to City Council to get guidance and direction on the commission, this establishment. So many of the things to that that I got direction on that staff and I got direction on to to forward and creating this commission and to update council and mayor is to remember that we had the subjects of visibility, economic inclusion, community cultural center, the education, public safety and criminal justice, wellness and housing and transportation, which is all, which are all included in the ordinance. So as the ordinance, as you have in your packets, it has the recitals where it should say, October 10th, 2017, the Indigenous Circle of Flagstaff presented a summary of the findings and recommendations. And then as the, as council mayor and council directed City Manager to begin work on the five year strategic planning process to implement the recommendations. And then to create the Indigenous Commission because it recognizes and renews the commitment between the city of Flagstaff and the Indigenous nations and communities of Northern Arizona to work together. So a lot of the, a lot of the things under the ordinance are just general establishment, the usual establishment of the of commissions. But a lot of the things that you had directed us to include as far as some of the highlights under this, it would be the for membership and officers. The main theme would be that that the commission will have seven voting members, which will be appointed by City Council and three ex officio members, which will be from the Indigenous Peoples Advisory Commission with Coconino County. And City, well, City Council will also appoint these members. And these members will be covered under the memorandum of understanding, the three ex officio members. So and then also that the members will have a tribal affiliation as enrolled members of a tribe or nation recognized by the federal and our state governments. And will have interest in the presented strategic plan as presented to City Council. So and then other things, just the terms of office are all general, generally, general accepted terms as outlined by commissions, by creation of commissions. And then we do have a memorandum of understanding between the Coconino County and the city of Flagstaff, which if you have questions on Sterling, I will defer to Sterling regarding those, but it just has a lot of the information that you have given us regarding how the exo, ex officio members will will have a place at the, at the, at the table for the, for the Indigenous Commission. So let me see what else I have on here. So I, I guess the main highlight too is that the Indigenous Commission shall not make recommendations to the City Council regarding any litigation involving Indigenous people or tribes or water matter issues or land matter issues. So I think, I think those are the ones. So I think those are the ones that that were discussed at the council meeting. And the main thing too is that that a lot of the focus will be on the strategic plan and and the titles as I had read them And if you have a questions for me, I will take those or you can, we can have Sterling or Stacy help. Help me in that. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Ms. Tohe. Are there any questions? If not, can I give a motion?
Mayor, I'd like to move to read ordinance number 2020-24 by title only for the first time.
Is there a second?
Second, McCarthy.
There's been a motion made by Ms. Whelan and a second by Mr. McCarthy to read ordinance number 2020-24 by title only for the first time. Is there any further questions? All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
That motion carries. Thank you.
An ordinance of the City Council of the City of Flagstaff, Arizona, amending the Flagstaff City Code Title II Boards and Commissions by adding a new chapter two dash 26, creating an Indigenous Commission, providing for repeal of conflicting ordinances, severability, and establishing an effective date.
Just to let everybody here know that it would be the City Council's intention at the October 6, 2020 City Council meeting to read ordinance number 2020-24 by title only for the final time and then adopt. Mr. McCarthy, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I did. I'm obviously supportive of this. I seconded the motion. I would just hope that when this happens, that we have representatives of a good cross-section of the various tribes from our area. That's my only comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're now down to our discussion items. This would be 10A is the first one. This is an update regarding the Rio de Fire flood control project.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of council. This is Trevor Henry with the Capital Improvements Program. Can everybody see the presentation on the screen?
Yes.
Excellent. Thank you. So the Rio de Fire Project Team is pleased to provide for you this month's update for the flood control project. This update will be a team approach similar to what we did last month. This project update will focus on the Army Corps, project design, real estate, BNSF Railway, and public involvement. I'll provide the update for the Army Corps and project design. Bryce Dotty, the city's new real estate manager, will cover the update on the real estate. Christine Cameron, project manager, will cover the update for BNSF Railway and the public involvement. This update will concentrate on matters of the project since August 18th, when we were before you with that update. The Army Corps is still considering and providing input on their agency technical submittal. The Army Corps is responsible and the city is assisting and addressing and coordinating with the project stakeholders. The Army Corps has indicated the next submittal is anticipated for the month of October. The city and the Army Corps continue to pursue all matters of the project with regards to a project schedule. There are certification measure measures that need to be considered and are a big part of our discussions. At this time, the contract award for Phase One will be made in 2021. On September 11th, the city and the Army Corps participated in a project team meeting. Colonel Julie Bolton was introduced as the new LA District Commander for the Army Corps of Engineers. Mayor Evans conveyed the city's ongoing commitment for the project and reassured the Army Corps of the importance of this flood control project. The Army Corps is committed to awarding a contract in 2021. The city is committed to providing our responsibilities to support a contract award in 2021. Project design, the Army Corps is still reviewing and compiling all the received comments from the city and stakeholders. The next submittal of the project design is anticipated in October. The city continues to work on our utility relocation design for the entire project. The city and our design engineer worked with the Arizona Department of Environmental Quality. The project has received the approval to construct for the wastewater and drinking water components. This means the city's utilities have been certified by ADEQ and has approval to move into construction. The city and our design engineer are working with the Arizona Department of Transportation. We are working to seek approval on the project that crosses or falls within the state's rightway. And the area of question is identified as five points intersection. And with that, I will turn over the presentation to Bryce.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor and Council. In order to proceed to the next step in our draft real estate schedule, which is the parcel appraisals for all of the acquisitions we need, our consultants are preparing segment maps, which identify our acquisition needs within each distinct parcel. Once we turn those over to the Army Corps, they will review them and approve the segment maps and enumerate each acquisition needed and present us with a track register from which we can begin ordering appraisals. We've submitted our draft real estate schedule to the Corps and currently I have weekly meetings with the real estate counterpart to try to tighten this timeline so that we can have all of the acquisitions completed. The current schedule is anticipated to be completed in 2021. And this is all according to the Army Corps guidelines and procedures. And with that, I will turn it over to Christine.
Thank you, Bryce. Good evening, Mayor and councils. This is Christine Cameron, project manager with Capital Improvements. So our current tasks with BNSF Railway include the construction and maintenance agreement and the selection of the channel under crossing under the railroad tracks. The CNM agreement is an extensive contract between the city and BNSF for construction and future operations of the Rio Channel. The document document is currently going through review and comment between our agencies while we complete the plans and work on the real estate agreement with the railroad. Another critical part of the project coordination with BNSF is the selection of the undercrossing structure of the channel. The group is currently determining how that will be constructed. We have a meeting between BNSF, the Army Corps and the city on October 6th to discuss this progress on these two main items. Slide please. The other project area that we're busy with is the public involvement. We've received comments from council and the public about the outreach, and that has been a great reminder for us to keep current with our public efforts. So we'll be ramping that back up this fall. One of the main questions we have heard from the public is what will the project and the channel look like in its final form? And showing them the the two-dimensional engineering plans, not it doesn't always provide the best information to those that are not accustomed to looking at them. So we're working with our local consultant to develop some realistic illustrations that show what the completed channel improvements will look like. We plan to have those exhibits available for council and the public at our October 20 update. We also have a public or a project meeting this the week of September 28th with the property owners on Navajo Drive, and this is on the north end of the Upper Reach. This is an area where the Army Corps will be constructing a new flood wall adjacent to private property, and the Corps requires a temporary construction easement from the residents to install the wall. So in this meeting with them, we'll be walking the area and the channel where the wall will be. We'll be discussing the location and the height of the wall and looking at the impacts to provide property in this area. We're also gearing up for a full public meeting later in October. This will be a virtual meeting to review the status of the plans and the project schedule, talk about the project benefits to the community, and we'll provide those illustrations I spoke of before. And these will again show the improvements in the plantings and what it will look like for the channel when when it's completed. Slide please. As always, here is our city staff contact information and the link to the web address that has our project documents and presentations. So this concludes our September Rio de Fire project update, and we are happy to take any questions you may have.
Counsel, do you have any questions? Ms. Odegaard?
Yeah, just wanted to say thank you to Trevor and Christine and Bryce on this update, and especially thank you, Christine, for the effort of doing the reach out to the neighbors there in Coconino Estates. I know there's some, you know, some angst, I guess, among the community members there concerning what this project will look like when it's completed. And I know this project is going to be a good project that I think will be the betterment of the community, that the looks of the project will be higher in expectations, what the community expects, because our I've always said our community has high expectations of what projects or what the community should look like. And I'm hoping that they'll be very pleased, especially with the foots improvements and things like that that will come along with the project completion. So thank you, Christine, for that update, and thank you for the effort of reaching out to the neighbors.
So I do want to say thank you very much to all the staff, Christine and Trevor and everybody who was involved, who has been involved with this ongoing project. We had a great conversation with the Colonel who was newly installed, I think, what was it last week or the week before? We had a chat with her on Friday. She's very, very excited to get this project done. She's looking forward to coming to Flagstaff and visiting and walking the Rio per se. I do want to just mention, maybe I didn't understand something at the meeting on Friday, and so I'm going to ask the city manager. She seemed to indicate that they would be willing to sign off on this project in early December.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Council, and thank you to the presenters on this. I was listening during that part of the discussion, and of course, we have a number of items out there that that will probably culminate in some sort of written document being signed or executed. I am not entirely sure which of those she was referencing. I did hear the same comment that you just made reference to, so allow us to look into that unless Christine has any more information on it now. But I don't, you know, we certainly will be going through the procurement and contract process in the 2021 calendar year. But I don't know what other legal documents or contractual arrangements that the Army Corps was referencing that would occur earlier, but I did hear the comment. Christine, is there anything that you can enlighten us on with respect to that?
Thank you, Greg. Mayor, we're not sure that we're going to be able to get a document in front of council prior to prior to December or the first of the year. And this deals with, you know, the real estate agreement and the construction and maintenance agreement with the with BNSF. We did have a follow-up conversation after Friday's meeting, you know, looking into specifically this this point that you bring up. What is the first document that will be available for council to to approve and to further the project? So we will follow up with you on that.
Okay, so is it is it correct to say that the Corps might have their documents ready to go in December, but we might have some final stuff we have to do?
You know, it's all one and the same. The city's documents are the Corps' documents at this point. It's it's the construction and maintenance agreement with the railroad that the Corps has a large effort in in helping us complete. It's also the real estate approvals, the acquisitions that need to happen, you know, later into next year, and and all of that stuff comes together at once.
Okay, so I look forward to just some clarification as to, you know, what we think. That would be awesome. Okay, we're going to move down to our quarterly update on fair items and discussion queues.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just going to bring up a quick copy of our working calendar. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Stacy Salzburg, city clerk. I am here to take just a little bit of your time to provide an update on your current fair and discussion queue. So on the screen, you're going to see the fair item portion of our most current working calendar. And as you can see, there are a number of items that council has recently given direction to staff on that we are working on bringing back for some future in-depth discussions with council. And so you can kind of see from this area here, beginning the first part of January, we've got quite a few items that we are we're currently working on right now. Additionally, whoops, I'm sorry, there are two fair item requests that are awaiting the review of council to see if there are the requisite number of council members interested in bringing these items forward. Both of these items will be considered later in our agenda this evening. And then of other interest would be our actual council discussion queue. So these are the items that council has that three council members has said that they want to bring forward for future discussion. You will note that the items in red are the items that council has asked to be expedited. So we've got the various, the three different police department discussions, one of which has already happened, but we've got two other follow-up discussions coming in October. And then the second item that is being expedited right now is the looking at that the zoning code and to allow for the commercial mixed-use areas for affordable housing. And what is interesting to point out here and something for your consideration as we move forward into the next few months of our meetings is that we are currently scheduling out any additional conversations or fair item discussions to the latter part of November, just based on the the current workload that is in front of us. And so I just wanted to take a quick moment to just let you know where we are and what the scheduling looks like through through the end of the year. And I am available if there are any questions that you may have for me.
Okay, I don't see any. Thank you so much, city clerk.
Thank you, Mayor.
We are now headed to item number 11. This is council liaison reports. This is a future, yeah, council liaison report. This would be reports for the commissions that we set on as council members. Is there anything to report at this time? Mr. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just want to report concerning a council liaison is concerning BPAC. There was a meeting yesterday afternoon at four o'clock, and just really a couple discussion items were on the agenda. The first item was concerning small grant opportunities for artists. I guess it had a dollar, a small dollar amount. I think it was around 2,500, if I remember right. Well, that was increased to about 4,500. And then there was also a couple times during the year that there is an opportunity for a submittal for request of a grant. And then also, the project could be more of a temporary nature instead of a permanent in nature. And then there was a suggestion and that I've been asking for the commission for the past year is the suggestion was made by the vice chair, Sandra Labowski, to try to get youth involved in applying for that grant opportunity. As we know, there's a lot of talent out here in our community among the youth. And so it was her suggestion and which I found very favorable, is trying to reach out to the youth and maybe try to reach out to the schools in the arts departments of letting the kids know about this. the kids know about this opportunity. And so, and that was it on the first item. And the second item was concerning some empty storefrontage that we have here in a community of maybe of seeing if that storefrontage would allow some public art display of some sort, you know, in the windows at least, while the building is in transition. And so that's something that Liza was going to look into, do a little more research on, and report back to the Commission if that's a possibility, using empty storefrontage for art space. And that's it, so thank you.
Ms., excuse me, Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to let Council know that next week, the Commission of Diversity Awareness has a survey report that they're going to be bringing towards us and presenting to us, and I just wanted to read the background and methods paragraph. In May of 2018, discussions were held within the Commission of Diversity Awareness about the need to have a clear view of the climate for diversity in Flagstaff. Commission recognized that there was a dearth of data-derived information concerning the views of citizens of Flagstaff on diversity issues ranging from sense of inclusion, sense of equity, levels of comfort in various venues, and inclusivity of city services. The Commission reckon, recognized that to fulfill their mandate to provide recommendations to City Council, they needed to have a deeper understanding of the views of citizens of Flagstaff regarding diversity. The purpose of the survey project was to address the need for data-derived understanding of the city's diversity climate to, in order to fulfill our Commission's charge. A detailed description of the mythology follows in this report. So that's just the opening paragraph. I just wanted to share that with the group. I know the Commission's been working very hard on this report and the study, and they're very much looking forward to it being presented to us next week with their key findings. So I'll leave it at that, and I look forward to our discussion on this next week. Thank you.
Anything else, Counsel? Okay, we're going to go ahead and move on to item number 12. This is our future agenda item request. And so right now, we're looking for three members of Council total to move something forward. The first one is a fair, a future agenda item request affair from Councilmember Whelan to place on a future agenda discussion about changing the administrative decision to renew, reclaim water contracts outside of city limits. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, afterthought and consideration and conversations, I, I would like to pull this item because I, I think with, with what is coming up with the Community Stakeholder Committee on Reclaim Water, this conversation doesn't necessarily need to focus on the reclaim use of water outside the city limits, but include both of those things. So outside of the city limits and, and within the city. Right now, it's clear that, that new contracts would come to the City Council after going through the Commission and then to Council for the initial agreement only for those agreements, but not the renewals. And I just didn't want to, with the transition in councils and leadership, I didn't want this one to fall through the cracks. So I believe that with, with what we're doing on the Community Stakeholder Committee, it's important that Council understands that renewal decisions right now are administrative in, in all of our water, reclaim water agreements. And because the, the purpose of our reclaim water is, is going to change in the near future, I believe that the discussion needs to be had. And Stacy, I heard you. I, I know that we're running out of fair item time, so, so I would like to pull this and I would like to restate it in another way.
Okay, the next one would be a future agenda item request affair. This is a request by Councilmember Whelan to place on a future agenda discussion about property maintenance requirements outside of Title VI and Title VII. Ms. Whelan?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And, and I'm glad to read, City Manager, that, that you were able to go out and walk one of the communities that this involves. It seems as though there might be an equity issue in, in how we're negotiating property maintenance and, and our codes. You know, individuals who live in communities with HOAs seem to have a mechanism that, that deals with these issues, but other neighborhoods, even though we do have Title VII health and sanitation and Title VI in our own city code, it doesn't seem to be doing the jobs in the neighborhoods of Southside, La Plaza Vieja, and Sunnyside. And, and so I bring this up as saying that these neighborhoods specifically that either border NAU or very transient kind of housing have problems with property maintenance. These are the older neighborhoods. These are neighborhoods that elders live in, and, and there's not always relatives around to, to help them with, deal with this problem. So I'd really like to move forth a property, a discussion on property maintenance agreement.
Ms. Odegaard?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and I wanted to provide that support with Councilmember Whelan on her fair item concerning the PMO. I know Councilbody back, if I remember right, might have been in 2014, had a discussion on this item, and it didn't go anywheres.
No.
As Ms. Whelan has said, you know, there's areas in Flagstaff that struggles with properties that are getting very blight in nature. I drive by a street right behind my shop, and there's a couple properties, and even the residents in the neighborhood has tried to reach out to the owner, whether they could buy them, those properties, because they're getting extremely run down, where now the roof is even caving in on the house. And there's really nothing we can do as a city organization concerning those properties. So I definitely in favor of taking a look at this and see what we can do. So thank you, Councilmember Whelan, for bringing this forward.
Thank you.
Ms. Salas?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would provide the, the third support, and I look forward to discussion, especially with our neighborhood associations, namely La Plaza Vieja, Southside, and Sunnyside. Thank you.
Ms. McCarthy, can you verbalize? Ms. McCarthy?
My mute thing, I pushed it out like four times before it unmuted. I am supportive.
I also like to just add my support to this as well. I think it's important.
I just want to maybe make a little more detail. I'm not interested in the city becoming the nanny city and nitpicking, but I have seen one case where a house is abandoned, and the front door was open, and people had gone to the bathroom in there, and it was just unbelievable, and the city couldn't do anything about it. Those are the type of things that I want to address.
Thank you. So we'll go ahead and move on. We're now down to item number 13. This is a City Manager's report. City Manager, is there anything you want to highlight quickly in your report that you gave us?
Not really, Madam Mayor and Counsel, and thank you for a very thoughtful discussion on many fronts tonight. The only thing I will point out, and it's not calling it out for discussion, but I will just point you to it, is since the Mayor made reference to the meeting that we had with the Army Corps last week, the report that I provided to you has a nice little bio article with a photo of Colonel Bolton. So give that a read, and then also there's an accompanying document that was provided to us. It's a pilot written in cooperate, or cooperative pilot, rather, pardon me, through the EPA Water Infrastructure Finance Authority and the State Revolving Fund regarding our Flagstaff watershed protection program. A very nice cover story in that. I would encourage you to give that a read at your leisure. Thank you.
So down to item number 14. Item number 14 is COVID-19 updates. I'm going to go to Ms. Anderson, would it be?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Good evening, Mayor, Counsel. Shannon Anderson, Deputy City Manager. We do have a presentation with updated data if you would like to see that. Otherwise, I'm here for any questions or conversation that Council would like to have.
Counsel?
Is there anything?
I would like to, I would like to see that.
Okay, I will share my screen and go over that data together. Can you see that okay?
We can.
Okay, great. All right, so this first screen goes over the Coconino County Health and Human Services report showing the number of weekly cases. I'm going to move my little box here so it's not covering that. So you'll see based on this report, it showed September 5th at 39 cases, and as of September 12th, there were seven cases. Since then, there's been more testing that came in, so I wanted to share with you the next slide, which is, which is the number of daily cases. And so really calling attention to, since the last finalized weekly report from the county that was done on September 5th, you'll see that we've had some increases in the number of testing over the middle of last week. So our numbers according to the call we had with Coconino County on Monday is we have 108 cases in Flagstaff for last week. So we are seeing an increase in those number of positive cases. When we look at the hospital admissions here in our county, that has had a slight increase last week from three to seven. This is the number of COVID-related deaths, a slight decrease from four to two at the end of last week. Our community transmissions are still in the moderate level because we do have 37.1 cases per 100,000 and 5% positivity. So those are the things that are keeping us in this moderate level of transmission. When we look at the Arizona Department of Health Services dashboard, they are, they are two weeks behind us, and so their data actually goes through, I believe it's August 23rd, and they are showing moderate as well as our community transmission, looking at those same three measurements, just for a different time period. The reason again that this is important to our organization is because it impacts our ability to get approval on an attestation for our indoor gyms and fitness centers, which would include the Aquaplex and the Hal Jensen Center. The Northern Arizona Healthcare Hospital Census has actually reduced in the number of positive cases as well as the number of pending cases, so they continue to have the capacity to deal with those who are seriously ill. That's the end of the data that I have for you, but I'm here to answer any questions that Council may have.
Okay, I'm going to go to Ms. Whelan, did you have an original comment on this?
No, I just wanted to again see that data and, and make sure it was public, so I thank you, Shannon, for providing that.
Okay, I see that Mr. Odegaard has a question.
Thank you, Shannon. With the upticks that you saw, do you think that was from testing that MIDA came in? I thought NEU might have did a blitz when they first went back to school? That was my question.
Yes, NEU had a requirement that students be tested prior to coming on campus, so that could be potentially some of those NAU students. There also is some thought that it could be from visitors being in the community as well as some opening of schools.
Okay, thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you, Deputy City Manager Anderson. Can you just repeat one more time really quick? What, what category did you say we were, we were in?
We are still in the moderate community transmission level.
Because of, the reason I ask is the Flagstaff Education Association, FEA, put out a graphic a couple days ago saying that we were in the substantial category, and it shows our numbers going up to 115 on the 12th of September. Is that not accurate?
So Coconino County Health and Human Services puts out a weekly report. There's a one-week delay in that information, so they're basing that community transmission on the weekly report that was ending September 5th. Where we see the uptick to 114 cases Coconino County-wide, which 108 of those were in Flagstaff, is for the, the last week. So that actually won't hit their weekly report until this Friday, but that's why I wanted to show you those daily counts so that we could have a preview of what we're going to see in the next weekly report. So if that agent, so if that agency maybe is only looking at the last week, that could be why they consider it substantial, but that is not what the county is reporting at this time.
So you're saying that the, the reporting period closes on Friday, but yet the numbers from this week have already put us in the substantial category, correct?
No. What I'm saying is that if that agency is looking at the week through September, so if they're only looking at the daily rates through September 12th, that could be why they're considering it substantial. But Coconino County has not changed their transmission level from moderate to substantial. That has not changed.
Because their reporting period ends on Friday, correct?
Yes, exactly.
But if they, if they were to just take a snapshot of this week thus far, we've already crossed the 100 mark already.
Yes, we did.
So that does put us in substantial if we took a screenshot of today?
Yes.
So we are in substantial. I mean, we're only going to continue to build off of the 100 plus that we already have from now till Friday.
Well, I think the reason that there's a delay in the Coconino County report is because they basically do data scrub to make sure that it's accurate. So as we see in each weekly report, some of the numbers that were reported previously can change. So for instance, the number I gave you in last week's report showed 39, but now if you look at that same week ending, it says 45. So there's, there's a weak lag because sometimes there's a lag in testing, and those testing results go back to the date in which the test was completed.
Right, okay, so, so to the Counsel and to folks listening, we're in the substantial category is what I'm hearing. You know, I know that this week hasn't ended yet and that the county hasn't caught up to the data, but if you just look at where we are now in the week, we've already crossed that line. So the numbers are going up in our community, and that's very concerning. Do we know anything about the numbers on? Uh, do we know anything about the numbers on campus? I know that they're managing some 94 cases or 96 cases, but, um, my understanding is that there's a difference in the numbers of which they're managing and the number of cases that are amongst the NAU population.
I don't have an update from NAU at this time, Vice Mayor, but I have checked in with Coconino County to see if we can add those updates to our Monday calls.
Okay, thank you. And then lastly, uh, I just wanted to mention, I, I sat in on the city call with all of city staff regarding our reopening plans. And I just wanted to say thank you to the, the leadership at the city for the presentation and, and it can all the questions that were given. And just wanted to mention that I did talk to city manager about this and, um, I did share that, you know, there were originally plans not to distribute masks at our facilities, like City Hall, if someone came in without a mask, we would require one, but we wouldn't give them one. And, uh, city manager, correct me if I'm wrong, but hopefully we're gonna change that and we're gonna be giving away masks for free to those who are coming to City Hall.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. It's a work in progress. I have not had, uh, dialogue with other leaders, staff on this, uh, but we will pursue it, uh, and please stay tuned. We'll be reporting back to you as, as to what we can do. Uh, obviously there's budgetary impact, but we, uh, we hear you loud and clear and we will do everything we can and we'll report back to you on that. Thank you.
I appreciate that. Okay, thank you, Mayor.
I'm gonna go to Minister Aslan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to throw my weight behind, uh, the Vice Mayor's, um, observations and conclusions. I, I think he's right. And when you look at the data provided on the, on the Coconino County dashboard, towards the bottom, and we get that same graph we saw at the beginning of this presentation, but with those 108 numbers included, I mean, it does seem to start to tell a, a pretty different picture, um, for this week. And, uh, we'll have to see, but it's, it's likely that this trend, um, will persist. Uh, or, you know, even if it flattens out, that puts our numbers way above where we were when we were originally having the conversation about our metrics for how we're going to look at all this. And I just wanted to remind everybody of that.
And so I just want to weigh in and say that, you know, I, well, I understand that the county, it goes back and they look at the information and they scrub it to make sure it's right. It looks like when they finally post the information, it's in addition to. So, um, for example, Ms. Anderson, you said one week, the final number I think was 34, but when they got around to posting those numbers, it was actually 46. Right? So we can expect when you look at the numbers that are being put on the dashboard, that when we see them, um, the official numbers at the end of the week, they're gonna be substantially higher. So we as a city really truly need to be mindful and we need to be wearing our masks, continuing to social distance and wash our hands. I think that's extremely important. I think when you look at what some of the universities have done, the university, what is U of A? They have asked their students to voluntarily shelter in place for 15 days. Um, I believe, uh, uh, ASU, the president there actually wrote a letter to the Department of Health, citing several violations of restaurants and bars that are in close proximity to, um, the campus there. I think that we just to be, need all to be, to be mindful of the fact that COVID is still a thing and we are not done with this global pandemic yet. Is there anything else? Okay, let's go ahead and move down to item number 15. Item number 15 is informational items and reports from council and staff and future agenda item requests. We're gonna start with Mr. Odegaard tonight.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just really have, uh, two things. Uh, first I wanted to say, uh, thank you, City Manager, for the, the report concerning police and fire. Definitely a touching so, uh, story, uh, concerning, uh, a couple of police officers, uh, using their own funds to purchase, uh, a child here in our community, a bike that really needed one. And then I just wanted to have a little follow-up and maybe you could just get back to me, um, at a later time and maybe also update the council body as a whole. It's concerning, uh, the tree issue on Beal Road. I've been talking to some community members, um, as of late and they've been asking me, what's the story concerning the sign that a resident has put up concerning the trees that are on their property? If you could, uh, respond, whether it's e- tonight or, or an email to the council body at, at a point in the near future, I'd be really appreciated, uh, because, um, I'm not sure how to respond when the community's, especially when someone sees a big card or, uh, a sheet of plywood signed in someone's front yard, um, concerned with, uh, their beef with the city. So, thank you.
City Manager, did you want to respond to that now?
Briefly, thank you, Madam Mayor. We have, uh, talked about this at length internally, uh, and I want to give, uh, props to our engineers and, and others for working through some creative solutions. We, uh, as I understand it, will be engaging the services of a professional arborist who will go out and look at the, there are basically two trees in question. There may be more, but two that are the focal point here. And th- there's a, a strong likelihood that one tree will need to be removed because of line, line of sight issue. So it's a safety issue. There is some possibility, absolutely not a certainty, but some possibility, that, uh, one of the trees may be, um, spared, uh, by, uh, tweaking the sidewalk design. The sidewalk is not going away, it will occur there, uh, but some design alteration, uh, could be met. I have seen the same, uh, front yard sign, uh, Councilmember Odegaard, that you're making reference to. I believe the two trees we're talking about, by the way, are within city right of way. And, uh, as recently as today, I heard from a neighbor out there who is in support of the sidewalk and, uh, advocating that the trees be removed if, if necessary. I had the same dialogue with her this morning that I'm sharing with you. Is, is that we will have an arborist look at it, we will do what we can, but it's likely that, uh, at least one of those trees will be removed. Thank you.
And thank you, City Manager, for that update on that.
Ms. Solis?
Uh, just wanna express my, um, deepest condolences to the family of Officer Shugard and to our, uh, uh, Flagstaff Police Department.
Ms. Whelan?
I also would like to express my condolences. I would like to place the fair item back on to include, uh, asking for a discussion on the value of not only new contracts, coming before the Water Commission and Council, but also the renewal of contracts to follow that process when it comes to all reclaimed water, contract and renewals both in and out of the city. I could send that to you if you'd like me to.
Please.
Thank you, Mayor.
City Clerk?
My apologies, Mayor. I was just going to say, yes, Councilmember Whelan, it would be helpful if you could send me that language.
I'd be happy to.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. And, and I too would like to share my condolences to the, the family and friends of, of the officer, and to our police department, of course. Very tough, tough situation and tough, tough, just tough to hear about this and learn about this, especially in today's reality. And so I've been thinking a lot about all those connected to that individual. So, um, and then, um, I just wanted to mention to you all that I've been having conversations with leadership, specifically with City Manager Clifton, about having a conversation, uh, through an agenda item in regards to our most vulnerable and, uh, unsheltered population regarding their well-being going into the winter, the upcoming winter. And, and I've been trying to work with leadership to not bring this up as a fair item. And so this is, uh, just an update to you all that. This is a, a topic I hope that we all would appreciate to have. I was hoping to have this conversation last year before winter hit, but that conversation never came to fruition, so I'm trying again this year. And, and, and just want to give you all an update on that. And, and City Manager, I believe, um, is, is working to make that happen and, and weave that into one of our agendas rather than going through the fair process. And I do actually have a fair request to add to the list. Uh, I love, I'd like for us to have a conversation on Tequila Sunrise and, and the way we handle that as a city. And I'll just keep it vague and broad like that. And, um, I look forward to that conversation and I, and I hope that council supports that, uh, reaching a conversation. Thank you.
Mr. Aslan?
Thank you, Mayor. I extend my condolences as well to the entire department and also to Officer Jarrett Shugard's circle of loved ones. My thoughts always go out to the officers I know and their families when heartbreaking news like this comes out of the department. And I am certain they're all rocked with grief right now and I just, my, my thoughts and feelings and prayers are with everybody and I hope they feel appreciated for the amazing, uh, hard and difficult work that we all collectively ask them to do all the time. And I don't have any other items right now.
Mr. McCarthy?
Well, thank you, Mayor. I think just by coincidence, yesterday I was talking to a medical assistant and her husband is a Flagstaff police officer and she and her husband knew the officer that just left us. And, uh, it was pretty touching to talk to her about what a great guy he was and how sad this is. On a more positive note, um, I would like to point out that this Saturday between 10:00 and 12:00 is Peace Day at Heritage Square and I believe the mayor is gonna be there. And I will be there to give a demonstration about where the peace sign came from. So if you don't know where the peace sign came from, uh, come down Saturday or I can tell you privately. It's an interesting story. Anyway, I'm looking forward to that. Thank you.
City Manager, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, uh, Madam Mayor, thank you for a great meeting this evening.
So I guess I have two things. First of all, um, Officer Schuhart was an officer that we all knew because he guarded us, quite frankly, at council. I want to make sure that we as a, as a council and a city understand that this is, um, our second officer in about two or three years, as well as there is an individual, I believe, in dispatch. And that as we move forward with these conversations about the police and what resources need to go where, I really want to strongly encourage, um, council to consider something that the Vice Mayor brought up, uh, last week, right? During our conversations about the, the strict protocols and vetting that our officers go through. And the fact that many of us did not have to go through all that just to get our jobs. And then what happens, um, afterwards? The Vice Mayor pointed out that, um, you know, once our officers start work, what do we do to make sure that they have the resources that they need? As they see a lot of things that the rest of us do not see and they experience a lot of things the rest of us do not experience. And so as we talk about what things look like in the future, I really want to strongly encourage that we make sure that we allocate some resources that have to do with making, um, a space, making time, making something for our officers as well as their support staff who get the phone calls, um, day in and day out, to be able to have that mental health check, to be able to have that mental health day, to be able to have whatever support they need going forward. So like, is it every six months? Is it every, is it every 12 months? But something. And I think that we could work with our police chief and his staff to figure out what it is that our officers would need. But I do think that that needs to be just as much part of the conversation moving forward as everything else that we've been talking about. And then next, I want to just mention that the Live Black Experience Town Halls that the city council, um, graciously moved forward. Uh, the first of those start on Thursday and they're going to be, um, they are going to be, uh, held virtually. You would register, uh, via the Murdoch Community Center's Facebook page. And, uh, once you register, you go to Eventbrite and it'll give you the link to the actual Zoom Town Hall. I would say I would like for the council to know though, that work started about three weeks ago on, um, gathering the information. And so there has been three, um, focus groups, one of which was with one of the historic black churches on Sunday. And so if council would like to be a part of those, just please go to the Facebook page for the Murdoch Community Center and then follow the link to register. The first one is Thursday, the second one, I believe, is Saturday. So with that, if there's any, if there's nothing else, uh, this meeting is adjourned.